You can just watch. This is where it began for me. This is where it ends for me. Yeah, wise God.
Okay, I'm gonna call us back to order. Is there a motion?
Yes. I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Move by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Mr. Alcarro. Let's do a roll call vote. Christine?
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. E. Cupp?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
All right. And I want to welcome everyone. I apologize for talking to you from my back. This is the way that we're set up. It's weird, but welcome. Thanks very much for coming. Next, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Dr. Kaiser. Or, sorry, just a roll call. Just to introduce yourself.
The AP Kaiser Assistant Superintendent.
Ross Holden, School Board Attorney.
Josiah Black, School Division Counsel.
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Matthew Haas, Superintendent.
Judy Lee, Rivanna District.
Kate A. Cupp, Jack Jewett District.
Jono Alcarro, At Large.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall.
Graham Page, Miller District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Opal Kendall, Student Representative.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Thank you. Now we'll have, we'll stand for the pledge. There we go.
There, there, there.
Get rid of you. That's so nice, Kate. Next, we'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Is there a board member who would like to make the motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Move by Mr. Alcarro, seconded by Mr. Page. We can do this on a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Motion carries. And then we need approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
All right, move by Mr. Alcarro. A strong last meeting for the motion, seconded by Dr. Berlin. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna start off with our announcements. First, we have our spotlight on education. Opal Kendall, reading that for us, please.
Thank you, Chair Lee. We've the privilege this evening of recognizing Zachary Grant, a Monticello High School senior. Zach's high school career began online during COVID, enrolled in the school's Health and Medical Sciences Academy, where they were introduced to the use of CPR and medical emergencies. This summer, when Zach was employed by the county as a camp counselor for young children, they got their CPR certification. And a few weeks ago, on November 24th, the day after Thanksgiving, Zach and their grandfather were driving on a winding rural road past Stone Robinson Elementary School. Zach noticed a car on the side of the road, and a few people gathered outside the car. More alarmingly, Zach spotted the little girl, a very young girl, motionless, on the ground. Zach stopped the car, and while Zach's grandfather retrieved a blanket to keep the girl warm, Zach ran to her side. She was unresponsive. While the people around the young girl watched, Zach used CPR and additional outdoor first aid training to check for vital signs before administering CPR. Within minutes, the police and EMTs arrived, providing additional care, and the child was transported to the hospital emergency room where she recovered. Many of us, I'm sure, can recall driving past a scene where a vehicle was stopped on the side of the road. It may seem reasonable to assume that someone has called 911 and that our assistance is not needed, or perhaps we would call 911 while we continued driving. It is not exactly clear what happened on that isolated road the day after Thanksgiving. Zach's third-grade teacher once remarked on her student's remarkable observation skills even as an eight-year-old. And nine years later, those skills were on display during a serious medical emergency. This year, the Department of Instruction introduced the Game Changer Award that can be given to any ACPS staff member that demonstrates leadership, innovation, accomplishments, and impact on not only their school but the division as a whole. After hearing about this heroic action taken by one of our ACPS students, a group of staff decided to create a similar award for students. From that was born the Life Changer Award. A life changer is someone that has had a significant impact on someone's life. They come from all walks of life and reflect well on their families, peers, teachers, and their community. Collectively, a life changer serves as positive role models for current and future generations of students. Zachary Grant is being recognized for their leadership, innovation, accomplishments, and impact on the lives of others. Their hard work and dedication to activism, service, and leadership reflect the standard of excellence for Albemarle County Public Schools. I would now like to present Zachary this Life Changer Award. I would also like to present coins from the Albemarle County Fire and Rescue Department and Police Department.
I'd like to thank everybody here today, and I'd also like to thank any previous teachers who are on the board. All of you have impacted students in a great way, and this could be another student that you have taught. Just think about that.
Wow. That's remarkable. So tonight, we have a lot of, not a lot, some people leaving us after this meeting. It's a sad occasion, but I am very grateful for the time that we've all worked together. First, I have a letter for Opal Kendall, who has been our student rep. Dear Opal, as your time and the crucial role of student representative to the Albemarle County School Board comes to a close, I wanted to take a moment to express my dearest, deepest appreciation, and that of my colleagues, for the time, effort, and passion you have invested in shaping the educational landscape of our community. Your commitment to enhancing the educational experience for students in Albemarle County has not gone unnoticed, and your contributions have made a positive impact in our educational community. Your willingness to take on the responsibilities associated with being a part of the Albemarle County School Board is commendable. It takes a special kind of person to embrace the challenges and complexities that come with such a role, and you have proven yourself to be not only capable but truly dedicated to the well-being and success of our students. As our school division increases its efforts to engage all members of our community, I am particularly grateful for the feedback that you gave at our meetings. That student perspective means something to us as members of a school board, and it takes bravery to speak up, as you have done. Your ability to listen to the concerns of students, parents, and fellow community members, and incorporate diverse perspectives into decision-making is a testament to your leadership skills and genuine commitment inclusively. As you reflect on your first year of service, please know that your efforts have not gone unnoticed. Your passion for education, coupled with your dedication, has undoubtedly left an indelible mark on the Albemarle County School Board and, by extension, our community as a whole. Thank you, Opal, for your unwavering commitment to fostering a positive and enriching educational environment for our students. Your service is truly appreciated, and I look forward to seeing the continued positive impact you will undoubtedly make in the years to come. Wishing you continued success and fulfillment as you move forward in all the exciting things that we know you will do. Thank you very much. Does he have anything you would like to say?
I just wanted to say thank you so much to all those that made this experience possible. It was really fulfilling for me.
Thank you. You're next. Yes, you're next.
As Chair Lee said, we're saying some goodbyes tonight, and I would like to read this resolution about Ross Holden. And I'm a lawyer, and so is Ross, so there's a whole lot of wherasses in this, but he should feel very comfortable with that. Whereas Ross Holden has served with distinction as a school board attorney for Albemarle County Public Schools for five years, and was the first full-time attorney solely dedicated to the business of the school board. And whereas Mr. Holden discharged his responsibilities with unwavering dedication, insightful, and well-researched counsel, and with an ironclad commitment to the highest standards of ethics and professionalism on behalf of the students, staff, and families that we serve. And whereas these exemplary contributions remain more impactful and lasting by his collaborative relationships with the school board, administration, and staff, contributing significantly to the success and well-being of Albemarle County's schools, students, and their families. Whereas Mr. Holden has been a trusted advisor in ensuring compliance with all laws and regulations governing the policies and operations of the school board despite the great complexity of those challenges. Whereas Mr. Holden's exceptional leadership, integrity, and deep understanding of our educational mission magnified his contributions. Whereas Mr. Holden, this is the last whereas, whereas Mr. Holden has earned the respect and admiration of his colleagues, school board members, and the school community for his tireless devotion to and support of our educational mission and to all things UVA. You don't have your orange and blue on. You can believe it. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Albemarle County School Board expresses its profound gratitude and appreciation to Ross Holden for his service and for upholding the values and advancing the mission of Albemarle County Public Schools. And be it further resolved that this board extends its best wishes to Ross and Ricky for much happiness, joyfulness, prosperity, and their future journeys that await them in this exciting new chapter of their lives. In witness thereof, whereof, the Albemarle County School Board hereby adopts and approves this resolution on December 14, 2023. I miss you so much. Dinner.
Ross, do you want to have any comments?
Well, if I can, Kate mentioned UVA. I'm back here in large part because of the over the last five years, without a lot better reason to be here. Thank you. My colleagues will be very fond of that.
And then Jono, you have a resolution, Scott?
I do. This is also full of wherasses, and this is about Phil Jeramita. Whereas Phil Jeramita has served the Public Affairs and Strategic Communications Officer at Albemarle County Public Schools with unparalleled dedication and commitment for 12 years, uplifting communications for the school division. And whereas Phil Jeramita has consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership, strategic thinking, and effective communication skills, contributing significantly to the success and positive reputation of our organization. And whereas Phil Jeramita has played a pivotal role in shaping and executing successful public affairs campaigns, fostering positive relationships with this community, and elevating the visibility and impact of Albemarle County Public Schools. And whereas Phil Jeramita has exhibited our division's values of equity, excellence, family, and community, and wellness, as well as kindness, generosity, and a collaborative spirit, embodying the core values of our organization, and fostering a positive and inclusive work environment. And whereas Phil Jeramita has demonstrated outstanding professionalism, integrity, and resilience, especially during times of crisis and challenging situations. And whereas Phil Jeramita has been a source of inspiration to colleagues, providing mentorship guidance, and consistently going above and beyond in the performance of their duties. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Albemarle County School Board and the entire Albemarle County Public School community express our heartfelt appreciation and gratitude to Phil Jeramita for his exemplary service, unwavering dedication, and outstanding contributions to the success of our organization. And be it further resolved that we wish you deepest happiness and peace in these upcoming years with your beloved wife, Randy, children, and grandchildren, and dogs Louis and Teddy. In witness thereof, the Albemarle County School Board hereby adopts and approves this resolution on December 14, 2023.
Well, I, driving over here today, I was stopped in front of a car, and on the back, there was a bumper sticker, you probably all seen it, that you're not really rich unless you have something mighty camp on. You know, in this room today, looking around, friendships and relationships, and contributions that people in this room have made, I'm a very wealthy man. Thank you.
Do we have one more?
It looks like it must be sort of a resolution principle to have six wherasses, because each of the previous ones had it, and this one also does. Whereas Jono Alcarro, an esteemed member of the Albemarle County School Board, was elected to serve in 2015, and has since dedicated his time, energy, and expertise to the betterment of our educational community. And whereas Mr. Alcarro served with distinction as Chair of the Albemarle County School Board, demonstrating exceptional leadership and a steadfast commitment to the values of inclusivity, equity, and educational excellence. And whereas during his tenure, Jono Alcarro played a pivotal role in the establishment of a groundbreaking anti-racism policy for the division, underscoring his unwavering dedication to fostering an environment that is conducive to the growth and success of all students, regardless of their background or identity. And whereas Mr. Alcarro exhibited exemplary diligence and passion in his service on the Capital Improvement Committee, contributing significantly to the enhancement of school facilities and infrastructure, thereby creating an environment conducive to optimal learning experiences for all students. And whereas throughout his distinguished tenure, Jono Alcarro consistently demonstrated his commitment to the well-being of the students by spending a substantial amount of time actively engaging with schools, teachers, and students, thereby gaining invaluable insights into the needs of the educational community. And last wherass, Jono Alcarro's disability and accessibility within the community were exemplary, ensuring that the constituents of Albemarle County remained informed and connected to the decisions and initiatives of the school board. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Albemarle County School Board hereby expresses its deepest gratitude to Jono Alcarro for his outstanding service, visionary leadership, and unwavering dedication to the advancement of education in our community. And be it further resolved that the Albemarle County School Board extends its heartfelt best wishes to Jono Alcarro in his well-deserved retirement, recognizing that his legacy of excellence will continue to inspire and guide future generations of educators and students in Albemarle County. In witness whereof, the Albemarle County School Board hereby adopts and approves this resolution on December 14, 2023.
Thank you, Graham. This is a very bittersweet evening, because I've enjoyed these last eight years in service to the county and to the school division. I've got a lot of friends who are from the schools. My passion has been going to all the schools at least once every two, more than three years. I slid into home plate this morning at Scottsville Elementary and completed that run again. I have learned so much, and I've learned so much from the people in this room and others all around. I am immensely proud to be part of this board, and I know that good things are still to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we have overflow right next door, where you can watch the screen, and there's seats in there on the screen. There are four seats over there now.
I was gonna offer that. I was gonna offer that.
All right, yeah. So we're gonna take a five-minute break, and we'll bring some more chairs in here. Oh my gosh. Okay, I just want to point that out, that it's really inaccessible to chair. Hold on. I have a check. 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 Thanks so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Jill Hines. I am in the Scottsdale District. Do I need to give my physical address? Is that protocol? Okay. So I'm just gonna read. Phil says I'm quick at this, so hopefully under three minutes. I just appreciate the opportunity to share my concern and call to action on a topic that's really near and dear, I think, to many of us, the school bus stop arm cameras. Every year in Albemarle County, about 6,000 vehicles wantonly disregard stop school buses with their lights and stop arms engaged. Each and every one of those 6,000 incidents represents at least one student who those drivers decided to put at risk of injury or death. The simple statistic hit home for us in the Hines family this November. One morning, my husband was waiting with my daughter to board the school bus while it was at a full stop. Coming from the opposite direction down a long stretch of a two-lane road, a driver knowingly continued past the bus, my daughter standing in our driveway about to cross. This was the fourth time this happened this school year. Aside from the frustratingly brazen disregard for the law, these incidents demonstrate to our communities' children that their lives mean far less than saving a minute or two of travel time. Our experiences are far from unique. As I've contacted or connected with other parents, county employees, and bus drivers, I've learned this form of traffic violation is increasingly common. Take, for example, my coworker, whose neighborhood had to persuade the police to monitor their stop for a week while a parent had an air horn that she used to warn off reckless drivers. Or the PTO member, whose child was in the middle of the road when a car came to a screeching halt, leaving tire marks when it nearly hit him. Obviously, violators have little fear of repercussion, given the impossibility of police monitoring every route. Our children and caregivers need help and support, as does law enforcement. I believe this help can come in the form of bus arm stop cameras. These cameras are set to activate and capture the license plate at the moment when drivers choose to ignore the stop arms, as a photo is triggered when one passes the arm while deployed. The violation is reviewed by police and citations are sent by mail once a determination is made about whether the law was broken. Bus stop arm cameras have proven a strong deterrent. Studies show that once a person receives a citation, they don't commit another. Even communication about cameras can help reduce incidents. Many in this room, this district, and the state have made tremendous progress in pursuing this option. They've laid a lot of legal groundwork at the state and local levels by allowing these citations to be issued by mail. Unfortunately, COVID delayed a lot of that progress. So I'm asking the school board to please reinvigorate efforts to acquire and install these cameras. As I understand it, vendor recommendations have been made, but legal details and implementation details remain. I want to commend all of the efforts to date to pursue these cameras, and I'm grateful to many people who have done so much work over the years. Let's please continue to press forward as quickly as possible. With drivers becoming more brazen and impatient, it's only a matter of time when one of those 6,000 near misses devastates our community. I encourage the board to support an adoption plan that respects due process, captures only the needed information to enforce the law where it's merited. I hope these details can be worked out before the end of the school year, perhaps knowing installation will take longer. I have a change.org petition, which I have included in a link in my documentation, with 228 signatures. Thank you very much.
Finneken. Hello, my name is Finneken Driscoll, and I'm in Scottsdale District. I am an Albemarle High School Mesa student who would be drastically affected by the new changes proposed, the seven-plus-one schedule. In Mesa, juniors and seniors give up two of their elective blocks in order to accommodate our two engineering blocks. While most students in our year have four electives, we are already limited to two. If this schedule is put into place, none of our elective blocks would be used by mandatory study halt or block period. That could instead be used as an elective to explore our interests. While I love Mesa and the classes that I take, I'm not just a Mesa student. I take drama. I've been in numerous shows at Albemarle, which is a class. I'm a part of choir and sing with our male a cappella group, Minutemen, which is a class. And I'm a part of leadership and student council, representing Albemarle High School as their vice president, which is a class. Students at our school need a balance between academic core classes and chosen electives. And for me and other HMSA, ESA, and Mesa students especially, that balance is starting to tip. We don't want to have to choose between arts and academics, but if seven-plus-one is put into place, all students will have to make that decision. High school is a time in our lives for students to explore interests and figure out what they enjoy doing in their lives. The department that will suffer the most will be the arts department, as students will be forced to drop an elective making that decision arts versus academics. As can be seen by Journey not having a choir, and Lakeside not having a sixth-grade choir or orchestra, after COVID, students have not been wanting to sign up for arts. Does the county want to dissuade students from taking these classes even more, when instead, they could be putting more funding and advertising to strengthen the arts department, which are crucial to the development of students and aid a well-rounded education? The arts allow for creative outlet for students that is much needed, helping with mental health, stress, and giving students a sense of belonging at school. If seven-plus-one is put into place, I would have two options. Either I continue doing Mesa and am forced to give up my electives for my senior year, which are both extremely important to me. If I pick up my, if I'll be forced to drop, if I pick the other direction, I'll be forced to drop Mesa and to go back to my home school of Western. I will have to return to Western for my senior year, leaving behind my friends, clubs, and organizations. Lastly, if I choose to stay in Mesa, I'll be forced to drop my electives, including leadership or drama, taking away that academic balance. I'm not the only one that will be forced to make these decisions, and after all these reasons, I strongly implore you to please vote against seven-plus-one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one. Pristine and Jackson Isley on Zoom.
Mr. Isley, we are ready for you.
Mr. Isley, just let us know when we should start the timer.
Mr. Isley, are we are ready for you? You're muted, Mr. Isley. You can go ahead when you're ready.
Are you able to hear us?
Mr. Isley, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Yeah. It's, it's, can you hear the computer?
One second, Mr. Isley. We're just playing with the sound.
Mr. Isley, you need to pause the live screen, please.
You can start.
Yes, go ahead.
If you want to say hello, just to just check your sound, and then you could get started.
Jackson, can you hear us? You can hear us?
You can hear us. Try going to like the little carrot above the mute button. And there's, it's not just. I just like to test speaker and microphone before. Close the mic.
Hold on, Mr. Isley. You can go ahead and finish, Mr. Isley. Yes, we can hear you. Continue.
Okay, um, I think I can't hear. I'll, I'll just continue. I'll send the link to the, uh, thing if you can't hear me. Um, but, and what might be an unintended consequence, though, the plan in turn limits such changes made by, uh, limits the changes made by that change. In a message about weighted and unwaisted classes sent to families before school began this year, Miss Thomas indicated that part of why classes were at a point of weighted was because students tried to preserve their GPA by taking study halls in lieu of unwaisted electives that would negatively impact their GPA. He indicated that ACPS was countering this by offering weighted rates for advanced electives.
Did you tell him to start off?
It's because the audio is working at a different time from the chat.
Christine, tell him that we heard most of it, please.
Okay, I'll, I'll continue. Sorry, I'm getting like names that come in that are like loose art. Okay, Miss, uh, Mr. Thomas indicated that part of why classes were at a, at a point unwaisted was because students tried to preserve their GPA by taking study halls in lieu of unwaisted electives that would negatively impact their GPA. He indicated ACPS was countering this by offering weighted rates for unweighted electives. Mr. Thomas added, quote, "Reducing student choice also poses some conflict with revision by substituting study halls for lease periods, lease periods for elective courses due for limiting their engagement in authentic challenges and relevant, relevant learning experience." End quote. This is exactly what ACPS is presenting with the seven plus one schedule here. In just a few months, this opinion seems radically different and in conflict from what we were just told at the start, start of school. Students need different things, and I know that after talking to them years, a lot of them don't need the study hall option that this plan is offering right now. Right now at Western, our study hall choices are great, and if you truly need a study hall, that person would easily sign up for it. Also, you're a theory that lost in similar blocks that others, it's a great time to call the future, retake, or quit this or even leave the club. It's very possible that I could need a study hall in the future, but I don't right now. Some students need a study hall, others don't. Leave it up to the student to pick their class in the future and hear.
Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone who made public comment, especially our students. It's very difficult for anyone to get up, um, but particularly our students, but this board, um, absolutely encourages all students, um, to, to sign up and speak at board meetings.
Thanks very much, Dr. Berlin, and thanks to everyone who spoke. Next, we have school board superintendent business. We're going to start with superintendent business.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. So, uh, this Hayes, or Dr. Hayes could be here tonight to make just a quick announcement. As you know, um, we've got a lot of work going on right now with All In Virginia, uh, providing tutoring for students. And one of the things that we are piloting during winter break is, uh, an intercession for the first time. So we're doing it for, uh, the first week of winter break from the 18th through the 21st, and we'll be providing high intensity tutoring during that time. And it's a trial run to see how it goes so that we can then, uh, do it for the whole week during spring break. Alamo County Public Schools received approximately $2.3 million to support the whole initiative, with 1.6 million, uh, being allotted to high intensity tutoring. We will be hosting a winter intercession, offering high intensity tutoring for qualifying students in grades three through eight. Uh, they are identified as not being proficient or low proficient based on their assessment from the '22, '23 school year. Right now, there were, uh, there are 124 students and 45 staff members that have signed up to be, the, the staff members have signed up to be tutors. With so many internal staff members signing up, we did not need to hire externally. This will be held at the elementary schools at Greer, and for middle school students, we'll be attending at Journey, so they'll all be converging in those places. And we're providing transportation. We also have that fully staffed. We will be serving breakfast and lunch, and we will be offering EDEP at Greer on those days. Uh, so we just want to see how this works to provide the intercession, and we've also got plenty of work going on, um, during the regular school days as we make it through the school year. Uh, we also, I just had a quick announcement regarding, uh, Journey Middle School, Dr. Kaiser, if you wanted to say a few words about that.
Sure. I just wanted to say that, you know, each day across the school division, we have any number of things that we celebrate, both large and small, and each day we work through any number of challenges. And as you are aware, this year, we are focusing in, improving attendance for our students and staff. We need our students in school to learn, and we need our staff, our high quality teachers and support staff there to teach them. Tonight, I'd like to give a shout out to, to the staff of Journey Middle School. On Wednesday, a milestone occurred. On that day, every staff member was there. There were no uncovered classes, and every child had the opportunity to learn at the optimal level. So I'd like to use this opportunity to thank the Journey staff and the staff across the division that who do show up every day to do their very best work for our students. So thank you all, and congratulations.
Thank you. And then we just had one other announcement with Jay, uh, just say a few words about K-Tech. Uh, just right where you are. And then, so we, we do, I know with the uncertainty around, um, there, there could be some uncertainty around K-Tech and with regards with the city taking over the programs. And, um, as the, as the point person on that, I thought you might just want to talk a little bit about it.
Absolutely. So we've had some very healthy and wonderful conversations with Charlottesville around K-Tech and the opportunities that they, um, are currently providing and that will be providing. And just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that our students will be 100% accepted into those, uh, programs, and, uh, we will take advantage of any programs that they have that they offer to us. It is highlighted as part of our career learning community still, um, and our counselors will promote those programs if they do any of our other programs. Uh, we've had some wonderful conversations with Charlottesville over that in the past couple of meetings.
Thank you, Jay. That's all I had, Ms. Lee.
Um, any school board business? If there's no other school board business, I'll open the floor for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, Rosalyn, you had a transportation update.
No, that's right. Sorry. No, it's okay. Good evening. I just have a brief transportation update as we have, uh, provided at each business meeting this year. Um, please, as I begin November 27th, we are now serving all students who have requested transportation in both the morning and the afternoon. That is a key milestone, uh, but we still have work to do. Uh, we are still currently utilizing stacked routes, temporary drivers, um, but we are serving all students at this point, but I want to continue the message that we are actively recruiting and training drivers to stabilize and improve, uh, levels of service. But it is a key milestone, um, and I know our families are grateful.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work on that. Um, next, I'll open the floor for a motion for an appointment to the Rio District seat.
I move we appoint Mr. Chuck Pace to be the Rio District Representative on the Alamo County School Board.
All right. Moved by Ms. Osborne, segined by Dr. Berlin. Can we have a discussion on that, please?
I appreciate, uh, getting to know all the candidates that applied, and I really appreciate them putting themselves out there. It's a tough thing to do, and we had some great candidates.
I agree. And I think this board, uh, or I feel, uh, that, uh, with Katrina leaving, um, who has a background as a teacher, it was important for us to, um, appoint someone with experience as a teacher, um, particularly someone with high school experience. We feel that because he was in the school district and also worked at central office, and I can, I can say this, um, for having just gone through it, it is very difficult to be appointed and to jump in, um, on January 14th in the middle of a budget season and to get up to pace quickly. Um, and so I think, uh, this appointment, um, with someone who has been in the school district, understands the school district and our challenges as well as our success areas, um, and that's why I'm moving to, um, appoint Chuck Pace.
I, I want to say that we've been through this here twice, once with Dr. Berlin, and this is our second time. And it's, it's a challenge because none of us live in the Rio District. We don't. We're making a decision for 11 months, um, for people, uh, who we don't, well, John O., you do represent them, but, um, otherwise, uh, we don't represent them. So it's something that we all take really seriously, um, and with the sort of humility that comes with that. And I agree, I, I feel like it's very important to have somebody who has both a teaching background and administrative background. I think that, that really evens out the board. I think it's, uh, it's something that's important for our board.
Just to follow on our chair, Lee said, uh, this is an appointment until, at the same time we make the appointment, there's been a request to the court to, uh, schedule a special election, which will happen in November. And, and as it turns out, because Katrina, Ms. Coulson, had two years left, there'll be an election the following November as well for the regular election. So, um, Rio, Rio residents will get a strong voice.
That's very true.
I did the preliminary, um, interviews of all of the candidates, and it was a great group and impressive. I encourage them to, uh, to consider running either in the next election or the election after or both, um, because, uh, there are people in there with a lot to give who actually want to.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Subsumed.
All right, let's move on to our school division business. 9.1, we have the CAC Annual Report.
Good evening. I'm Katie Campell, the Director of Special Education, and tonight I have the privilege of introducing two members of the Special Education Advisory Council, otherwise known as CAC. We're going to present their annual report to you this evening. Ms. Jessica Allen, co-chair, and Ms. Kate Altizer, co-chair, are going to present, uh, represent the CAC Committee this evening in presenting their annual report to you. Those of you that don't know, the Special Education Advisory Council is a group of parents, community members, stakeholders, and staff who work together to improve outcomes for students with disabilities. This year, I'm especially proud that we have the highest representation, at least in the 11 years that I've been here, and that schools are represented. Most schools have two representatives, the maximum amount, and all five community slots are full. And this is the highest representation, at least in 11 years that I've been here, but I think older than that. And so I think that shows just a continued commitment on both the committee's part and the school division's part to work together to improve outcomes. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Jessica.
Thank you, Katie, for the introduction. Can you guys all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it's great. Thank you, Dr. Haas and the school board for the time this evening. And most importantly, as Katie mentioned, I want to thank my 39 fellow CAC representatives and all the families across the district who took the time to engage with us as we compiled the data for this report. Um, and a special thanks to my fellow officers, Kelly, who was on tonight, as well as Joan Beard, who's there in the back, and Kirsty Men. Kelly and I are really honored to stand up here tonight, and we'll do our best in the next eight minutes, I'm going to set my own timer, um, to be a collective voice for the disability community. So we focused our recommendations this year into three points. I'll try to summarize each point in two minutes. Um, I'd also direct you to both the website or the school board agenda to access the full written report and the raw data we used to compile this. There's obviously much more than I can share tonight. Number one, increased family engagement and communication. This is critical for the success of our students and staff. As a new initiative of CAC this year, we designed a family survey with the goals of, one, collecting quantitative data on the experiences of our families, and, two, determining if there are particular demographics or disability groups who are less engaged. This was completed this fall and was a collaborative effort between CAC, the Office of Community Engagement, the Office of Special Education, the Office of Strategic Planning, and approved by leadership. So thank you all very much for that opportunity. Um, you can see on the left here, 275 families responded to the survey, which sadly only represents 11% of the 2,200 families who have students in special education. This was much lower than we had hoped for. Importantly, a staggering 46% of those who responded to the survey had never heard of CAC before. So we've got some work to do with that front, for sure. I do want to share quickly about the demographics who did respond to the survey. That can be seen up here in these graphs. On the left is representative of the demographic composition of the 275 families who responded to the survey. On the right-hand side is the composition of all students in special education in the district, those both with IEPs and with 504s. One caveat, your eyes are probably picking at first of all, is the red pie piece on the right-hand side that is not on the left. That is noted as multirace and was not included in the demographic questions on the survey. This is one of the things that we'll correct for next year, so we have more appropriate data sets to compare. But if you take that aside, um, what you can see is that there's not one demographic that has completely disengaged. Rather, engagement needs to be increased across all demographics. And in the interest of time, I'm not going to take you through this one. If we have time, we can circle back to it at the end. Instead, I want to use my time to highlight our data-driven recommendations that are found in the report. So we will continue to do a deep dive into the survey data in collaboration with the Community Solutions Clinic at UVA Law School. Um, I'll be sharing more about that specifically at our January 9th CAC meeting. But we recommend an annual continuation of the CAC family survey. We'd also like to see a continued concerted effort by ACPS leadership to engage with families in our disability community. Some great work is already being done by the Office of Special Education on this front, and we'd further ask for dedicated time from the Office of Communication to help with sharing their messaging. Number two, um, increased support for meaningful inclusion. Inclusion is a civil rights issue. I said that last year, and I'll say it, um, every chance I get. Continued research confirms that inclusive learning communities are beneficial for both neurodivergent and neurotypical students, and I think you, that can't be said more frequently. As a parent of a child with Down Syndrome, I can tell you that there's been many tears and hours of lost sleep, um, thinking about my child being included in his school community and learning alongside his peers in the least restrictive environment. And I know I'm not alone when I stand up here and say that for our kids, each step forward feels like a hard fought battle that we have to celebrate, not a given. And as a parent, that really starts to wear on you. Meaningful inclusion includes co-teaching. It includes collaboration between general education and special education teachers. It means students receiving services in their neighborhood school and a shared district-wide inclusion, vision of inclusion, and that has to start with every person that's in this room. The crux as we move to, towards a more inclusive school district is how to ensure appropriate accommodations for our students with disabilities and how to provide the protected time and training for our amazing teaching teams who are trying to accomplish that. We believe that adding two additional specialist positions, one in learning and one in behavior, can help provide support for both general education and special education teachers by serving as a coach to provide appropriate accommodations on both academics and behavior, which frequently, as you can imagine, go hand in hand. Our second recommendation regarding inclusion is to include special education teachers and TAs, which Kelly's going to touch on more, in professional learning community time. Simply put, inclusion is a lot less likely to occur if the district does not plan for and allow protected time for the conversations, the collaborations, and the learning from colleagues that is imperative in a co-teaching model. So I'm going to hand it off to Kelly now for number three.
Yeah, so I'm going to talk about increased support and retention for all special education staff with a focus on special education teaching assistants. At the beginning of the school year, all special education teaching positions were filled. We are really excited about that. We recognize the tremendous effort required to recruit and retain teachers to make that a reality. Now we're asking that the same level of attention be paid to special education teaching assistants. Those of us who, whose children utilize special education teaching assistants can tell you how critical they are to our children's success in the learning environment. I'm one of those people. My children is a non-verbal wheelchair user, and her teaching assistants are critical to how she experiences school. And they, um, you know, they write the notes home. That's how I know about her school day, essential to her learning. In many cases, our TAs know their students best. They're with them at recess, lunch, many places throughout the school day where the, excuse me, where the team members are not usually. And so, and that way, they, they are well informed about our students and positioned to communicate best about them. Joint classroom instruction, the TA's job description is to carry out instructional plans as designated by the special education teacher and the student's IEP. There's no mention of co-teaching, and there's no mention of the creation of academic accommodations. What we've heard from TAs is that frequently they are in the position of creating academic accommodations for our students. Often, this is the result of not being able to have that collaborative planning time with teachers that Jessica mentioned. And as a result, they are in the position of meaning to create those accommodations for our students so that they can access their lessons that day. Without being able to do that, they might, that might result in behavior issues, the student not being able to learn what they're supposed to learn that day, and ultimately that they not be able to achieve their IEP goals. This is just one way that TAs are a critical part of our special education team. Excuse me. They are paid on a 10-month contract. They often don't know until May if they'll have a position next year because of fluctuating caseloads, and the average annual salary is $24,000. So we'd really encourage the ACPS school board to consider raising the pay rates for those folks to recognize the critical role and the critical services they bring for our students. We have three specific, uh, recommendations for the board to make, um, and you'll see reflected in our report. We recommend the inclusion of TAs in shared planning time with the teachers that they support. We recommend an increase in the number of paid professional days that they have the access to. And third, we recommend, or professional development day, sorry about that. Uh, and third, we recommend that ACPS perform a position analysis questionnaire on this position specifically because we understand that they are providing, um, position specifically, because we understand that they are providing services that are outside of their current job description, and that those could bear some of the weight. We're really grateful for the opportunity to tell you tonight about the folks that are so critical to our student's success, and appreciate your consideration of all the recommendations that are made in our report. Thank you so much. I don't think we have time for questions.
No, we do. We nailed it.
Okay, okay, great. So, time for questions, great.
This is not a question, but I really appreciated the clarity of the report and the clarity and data behind all of it, and I thought it was very clear. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that was amazing. I mean, I knew what, I could see what I needed to underline, circle back to, I mean, just very comprehensive, backed up with data, just like, this is a problem, here are some solutions, just understood your request, very clear. I really appreciated that.
Thank you. I think that, thanks to, there's a number of our folks in the back, and hopefully maybe some online, so just say, yay, way to go, team.
What is your strategy for increasing the survey response rate? I mean, 11% is pretty low. I think you did a survey a couple of years ago, and it was even higher then, wasn't it? Or, maybe not. But I think, this is, this is interesting data, but I think if you could get that raised, you might uncover some more opportunities or some more needs for the students.
Yeah, I mean, we couldn't agree more. I'm not sure that there was a survey before. This is my third year here, so it would have predated me either way. So, I certainly can't speak to that. But I know in working with the UVA Law School, they have suggested some initiatives to increase community engagement, things such as focus groups. Our members have talked about additional ways to distribute the survey, paper copies versus QR codes. I think we certainly would like to have a working session to kind of deep dive into that. I think it would be great. I think there's a very important component that it's led by parent volunteers and not ACPS leadership. And I think that's a critical piece, but at the end of the day, every suggestion we might have involves more volunteer time. And this is, you know, as you well know, a group of parents that doesn't have, and teachers, a lot of free time to dole out. So, we've got to be able to collectively come up with, you know, paid positions at ACPS that are helping us further that, by still, I think, keeping the integrity of having it be a volunteer-led organization. I mean, we'd love to hear additional thoughts, but...
I mean, I think, I think the recommendation that you mentioned about having focus groups and qualitative data gathering
Yeah.
might yield you more robust, you know, results. You know, identify the groups of parents that you might want to talk to, and then gather them into answering.
Yeah. I think it was interesting, too, I don't have the data on the, I feel like as a parent, I get numerous surveys sent to me. I'm curious what the response rate is of the CEAC family survey compared to, say, the budget survey or any of the other ones. Maybe, I don't know, maybe it's similar, if it's similar, then I'd say that gives us some information. If it's drastically lower, that, you know, it would be helpful to see where we fall with other surveys as well, across the district.
I think, having, having, what, what questions do you want answered? You know, starting with that, and then figure out how to get those. But you're right, I mean, you get...
I mean, it sounds horribly low, but maybe the response rate for all surveys is only 10%. I don't know.
I did survey research for my PhD. It was, I got a little bit higher receipts.
You should come to...
We'd love your input.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank the CEAC Committee, the leadership, and the, and all of the members. And I think that the fact that you guys are, there are 39 representatives across all the schools. I don't know the last time, as I said. I was on CEAC many, many years ago, and there were, you know, 10 or 11 of us. And so, the fact that every school is represented, which means every child and every family has a voice, is so important. And then, thank you again that this report was so clear, and it told us exactly what we need to do to better support the kids, the families, and the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the high school schedule. Jay Thomas.
So, people have wondered why we're in here. The reason why we're here is so that we could all clear the deck, and the high school principals could come up and join the Board for this conversation, so that's why we're here.
And you want... You don't want the... Yeah. It looks, it looks a bit better. Please do.
All right, so good evening, Jay Thomas, Executive Director, Secondary Education. Just a reminder of why we're here. In November, we presented, based upon the strategic plan, again, if you look down at strategic goal number three, or strategic strategy number three, we were asked to investigate the value of implementing a seven academic period. So, in November, we came to the Board and shared what that committee had, came up with on the benefits of the seven academic schedule. The Board asked us to reach out, get some survey data back from both the students and the staff members, and that's what we're going to present to you today, as far as our findings. So, the first, we'll highlight the teacher data. In asking a question in reference to the current bell schedule, there was three things that this, or four things, excuse me. How does this option of what we're currently on with the eight academic schedule allow you to teach, plan, support, and enrich, and meet the flexibility of students? You can see that they were favorable in the current eight academic schedule, weighted score of 1.91 out of 3 on that. We asked a similar question on, well, the same question, on sample schedules, if you were on a seven academic schedule. The weighted score did go up a little bit, 2.13, specifically in the support and the rich and the meet flexibility of the students, with the two areas they highlighted, they, again, they thought were strong in the other eight-period schedule, but in the seven academic schedule, they thought that they would have more opportunity to do that. So, just point-blank asking, if you went to eight or a seven, which would you support? And if you remember from the presentation from the group, they said they were trying to get 70% support of the teachers if they were to consider moving to a seven academic schedule. So, straight out, the seven was 49%. The eight opportunity was 35%, and 16%, they said they would support either choice. So, hypothetically, if you moved all 16% of those to the seven academic, you'd have 65%, which is still a little short of the 70% they wanted to get. If you moved the 16% to the eight academic schedule, we'd be back to 50/50, which are our last couple of surveys, we've kind of shared with our staff members, that we've come back. And far, in relation to the students, and to be quite honest, I think the two students that spoke today pretty much summed up the comments pretty well that you heard throughout, that we saw throughout the survey data. Again, a little bit harder to put this out to students, because there's so many factors, standard diploma, advanced diploma. So, we really tried to highlight the questions that we heard were the electives around the electives. So, in an eight-opportunity schedule, where, what would that look like for an advanced diploma? What would that look like for a standard diploma? And we asked four similar questions. How does this option allow you to fulfill your diploma goal, explore your interests, participate in activities both in and out of school, and prepare you for post-high school experience, college, career, so on and so forth? And it was a very high weighted score of 2.28. Students who filled this survey out felt very strongly that that eight academic schedule does support that. And putting that same opportunity and trying to highlight the seven academic and the elective choices you may or may not have in that, again, asking the same score, or the same questions, and you see that weighted score drop to 1.71. Students felt pretty consistently that this schedule did not allow those same things in the seven academic. So, again, just asking point-blank, what is your preference? If you would go to a seven or an eight, or do you need more information, or I like both? So, eight-opportunity was very clearly the choice of students. Almost 2,700 students responded to the survey, so we did have a high rate of response from our students. 48% were in favor, 19% were in favor of the seven. I'm sorry, 48 were in favor of the eight, 19 in the seven, 13 said either one would be fine, and 21% just needed more information or weren't sure at this time. We did survey eight, nine, 10, and 11. They would be the four grade levels that are impacted if the seven academic were in place for next year. And you can see we had great representation from all four levels. In fact, the ethnicity almost mirrors the demographics of the divisions, so we felt like we got input from all our different groups and stakeholders there. And we have our five principals here to help answer any questions, based on the survey data. I'll be glad to flip back through anything you need. If you have any questions.
All right. Questions, comments?
I would like to know the best argument for moving to the seven plus one.
I would say, I'll just jump in. I think the piece from my end, and obviously, I've been in the division now for 18, 19 years, so I've been at, actually, I started at K-Tech, was Principal Monticello, Principal Western, now Principal Alba Marl. And I think the piece that is probably the most compelling for why you would consider the seven plus one is obviously on the teacher's side, right? I think that's where the conversation come up, came up back in 2011, in terms of where we started with what was a seven-period day. Now, back then, the intervention period was probably hit or miss based on which schools offered that, so really, it was just a straight seven, and depending upon how they operated. I think each school probably operated in a different way, and obviously, we know why it went to the seven-period day. I think looking at that from a lens of what that meant for the teachers, even though probably overall number of students taught may have been comparable to maybe what it is on the eight-period day now, it's just a matter of what it looks like in terms of preps, what it looks like in terms of load. And I think that's the piece that, you know, teachers who have been around for a while, and if no one was like to teach X number of students, and then a different responsibilities. I think we don't necessarily have the same responsibilities 10, 12, 15 years ago what teachers have that they have now. There's just so much on their plate to do things, and I think that everyone values, obviously, that's the main core component of what we want, is good educators, good teachers for our students, and making sure they feel like they're well-balanced in terms of being able to handle it, and they continue to have more on their plate to handle. And I think that seven plus one, through the eyes of educators, is a component, given the fact we have a lot of other components on the other side as well, right? But as far as the teacher's side, I think it just is, how do you create a more manageable caseload and opportunity to run your day-to-day operations, I guess? I think that would be the compelling piece that I've heard in my experience as working with staff.
I would echo that. I've been around long enough that I taught on the seven-period day when I was in the classroom. And just, it's the managing of lives and building the relationships with both families and with students. But what is interesting, I think, when we have the conversations with teachers, is that whatever we decide, I think we have to really push ourselves to think creatively about how we make the teacher workloads sustainable. I have excellent, excellent faculty who are just born to work. And so, I think that really is important to note. It's also telling, I think, that many of them themselves are torn. I really want to stay in this profession. I really want to make it sustainable. I hear the student need. I have courses that I want to make sure survive. So, I really respect that our professionals, in many ways, are sacrificing sometimes their own ability to have a sustainable work-life balance, because they care so much about the opportunities and the programs that they support. So, I do think that that's the compelling piece for us, but if not this, then something.
I mean, we've, I mean, we've heard sort of a history of switching, and it was not for academic reasons at all, it was budget, but, and, you know, one of the unintended consequences was a flourishing of electives. And I think 100% of the letters, we've received maybe 30 letters in that neighborhood, have been about preserving the electives and preserving that flexibility. I think there's been a lot of also misinformation out there about four study halls and such. I guess my question is also, with a, with a more manageable course load, or student load, or however it's, the language is, it would seem to me that that would translate into more interpersonal, you know, relationships with the students. And I think the argument I would like to hear, I mean, in addition to improving the workload for our teachers, which I think, my dad was a teacher, he complained all the time, but he was a good teacher, and it did take a lot of work. Is, is the academic, can we tease out the academic impact on having that greater connectivity with their students and families? I mean, that's, that's the argument, one of the arguments going forward. And I, well, I'm just wondering, you know, we've heard a lot of passionate advocacy from our students and some of their families, but mostly students. But I wonder what students we're not hearing from. It's sort of a ramble, but anybody who wants to tease that out, it's welcome.
I think you make, excuse me, I think you make an excellent point about, we've all had the experience where it has been one or two educators that has been the key sort of decider or factor in helping that child walk across the stage of graduation. And so, I think when you have 120 to 140, that becomes challenging to really understand what is that one thing? Because sometimes, it's just one thing, and it is the relationship, or it is someone believing that I can be a student. That makes a huge difference. I'm from Monticello, and there was, back in the day, Monticello wanted to be on a 4x4, so that the number of students would be drastically reduced. And I think, if I know the ethos of Monticello, it was because of that ability to know your kids and know, you know, a lot about them, and be able to motivate, and sort of design those learning experiences that are going to engage them and make them want to come to school.
It's a sticky wicket, is how do we define our thriving students? Those who are taking, you know, pottery and, you know, extra music classes, or, yeah, those who are connecting more with teachers? Or all of the above?
So, would you have suggestions on ways to address those problems and to have that better connectivity that doesn't upend the schedule and maybe cut electors from some students who want them? Do you have suggestions on ways that those things can be accomplished without upending the schedule?
Personally, having just met with my department chair in math, and going over the winter SOL results, and she is, you know, just this magician who does exactly what I just described, you know, sitting down with each child and building their confidence, and having them see themselves as students before they're math learners. And it's just this magical progression of getting them to the finish line. And we talked today about the need for maybe increased human resources, who have that freedom in time, right? Who aren't encumbered by either five classes or six, that, you know, can, that they know their content really well, and they know how kids learn it, and they know what to do when kids aren't learning it. That would be one suggestion that I think would be, could be very viable.
And right now, one of the things that's interesting is, and I, and I recognize why, but we have, so everyone has a very similar schedule. I call it the Lego world. Every block is the same length of time, but it needs to be full-time, is the same number of classes. And could we look at some flexibility that would create more flexibility in its teacher's ability to work throughout the day in different ways? And so, yeah, some of things that I thought of are wildly expensive, so that becomes an issue, but kids want eight, teachers want five. You know, if you teach 508, what is that extra block that you could use to pull and work with kids and to collaborate? I'm sure we can't afford that, but in my dream world, you would sort of explore that, because, you know, when I was teaching, I used to laugh that if I could get paid for all 12 months because of all the work I did in the summer to build a course, and the number of teachers that we have now, in teaching six of eight, who would move from two preps to three preps, and what it takes to really develop that Bible curriculum. It's an intense amount of work. In addition to... it's an intense amount of work, in addition to the family communications, the students, and some of our policies that are really, have been beneficial for students, have really added to the workload. The grading policy and the revision and the retake, we laugh and we joke that teachers teach six of eight, but they create twelve of eight.
Could tell you how many teachers participated in the survey?
Yeah, two hundred and eighty-two, I believe, let me go back to that, make sure I got the right number.
Two hundred and eighty-two. Two eighty-two, out of how many?
Uh-huh.
What percentage is that?
It was, if I remember right, it was right around, I don't want to guess.
I feel like it's about four hundred.
Sixty-something.
I feel like it's about four hundred, I think I looked at the numbers, it's like four, four twenty.
It's about a hundred per grade level.
And how representative is the statistics about students?
At, um...
Like, what's the population there?
Is that what you're asking about?
Mm-hmm. What's the, what's the student population? What is this?
Two thou, oh, gee, how many? Out of four, out of four thousand, two thousand six hundred ninety-nine. It's actually a large amount, when you look at a survey, we have hard time having you guys sit down and actually finish the surveys and take the surveys. So we had, we had a large amount of our, a larger percentage of our teachers, percentage-wise take it, but that's actually a large number of our students, two thousand six hundred ninety-nine students between those four grade levels.
I mean, that continues, I mean, you heard me say this at the beginning, and I appreciate all the work you did getting kind of student input and getting parent input, but I still feel like it came too late, like, that's just what I have to say, like, in these kinds of changes going forward, at the beginning, we've got to get parent and teacher and student input, we can't do it at the end. Because I've been out at schools and just out in the world, and I haven't been, I've only been at this, you know, I have been at this for eight years, but I've been at this for eleven months, and the number of students who have kind of reached out informally and have noticed me and said, and wanted to talk about it and wanted to understand it better, because I think that's it is, I, I don't, I don't think they understood what they were answering on those survey questions. I mean, because I actually, we were, I was at Western that day.
We were at Fermi.
Right, and I feel like they, they were, we were, Oh, Noble was there as well, and I was there, and we were, I was kind of answering, we were answering questions at the moment, and Jennifer was answering questions at the moment, and I, that's my concern, is like, we are making, we would be making a change for these, you know, six thousand students, and I don't know if they understand what, and those that we have heard their voices have been very strong voices in this question of elective, which makes me so happy, right? Because we think so much about kids who are like academic-focused, not balanced, coming out of this pandemic, like, students need music, students need art, and we need to give them the time to explore that before they have to make these difficult work-life-college choices. And so that's, you know, that's kind of my hesitation here, is I just don't, I wonder what other options, how do we put this into the great minds of our fourteen to eighteen-year-olds, what kind of suggestions they could have come up with, as well as the teachers who have been kind of thinking about this and that, you know, you know, all the time in their, in their dreams, so.
And if one of the reasons for doing this is to alleviate the amount of stress on the students, you know, conversely, I would say that if you give students more art and music and drama, you, they will build within themselves the tools to deal with stress the rest of their lives. I mean, just, obviously, I'm an artist, so that's where I come from, but I don't think we can discount the electives as a stress reduction thing there, you know?
I do think that another piece, as you look at this, because I think about, and again, my student who stands up and talks about the classwork and what that would prevent him from doing, and also think about, how can you be creative in your offerings? And we came out of a pandemic where everybody was virtual, right, and we got out of that, and we have some virtual offerings, and that's not like the end-all-be-all, right, for what we offer, but how can you make it, because you don't want drama four to be a virtual class, right? We understand that, that's an in-person, robust opportunity, but how do you be creative in the things that we offer now that can be different places, different times, different opportunities, different schedules for teachers, different ways? And we try to do some things at Albemarle now that are night school-related, like, how do you encompass some of that, too, that makes it so the delivery model of everything isn't always in the bricks and the mortar of the seven or the eight, to figure out how we could be flexible to help maybe solve some of that, too, both on the student's side for choice, but also on the teacher's side for potentially relief?
One thing I wanted to mention that Dr. Berlin and Ms. Sibley and I were talking about when Dr. Berlin was at Western, we were talking with Ms. White, who teaches our peer tutoring program at Western, and AHS has a peer tutoring program as well, and she was on the committee that helped develop the possibility of a seven-plus-one schedule. And the point she made that I had heard, and I thought was really relevant, was that she was very much in favor of seven-plus-one until recently. And her reason was that she thinks we have developed systems like peer tutoring to help manage the workload of teaching six of eight. Ninety percent of the kids we pull for peer tutoring come from freshman seminar and study hall, and a seven-plus-one schedule would effectively nullify the peer tutoring program, which would put a lot of that intervention work back on teachers. So that was part of her concern, which I thought was really interesting.
One of the other things I've heard quite a bit about is that there would be more students per teacher, and I would ask you, in your schools, you know, is that going to be two or three students? Is that going to be five or ten students, you know, and, and I'm not looking for absolute rocket science or, you know, on this, but if it's three to five is what you're looking at, I'd say I have currently six classes of twenty students, that's a hundred and twenty, I go to five classes, I now have five classes of twenty-four. So same number of students, I'm teaching biology, we still have the same number of students that will need biology. I think there's also a tendency, and I don't know exactly how y'all do it, but when I was at Albemarle, we always looked at the class level. So a lot of times, the AP and the honors students were in classes of twenty-five, twenty-six already, those might have to balloon up, or you might have to hire an extra point-three-three FTE or something like that to handle overload, so class sizes don't get to be thirty-two or thirty-three. And y'all guys who know it a little better than me, but it's, advanced-level classes were usually around twenty-one, standard-level classes and self-contained were always much smaller classes, because you wanted to take advantage of the student-to-teacher ratio with kids that really needed the extra support.
Okay.
Do you all have the same kind of thoughts in terms of numbers?
And that's what I experienced as a teacher on the seven-period days, as an honors AP teacher, I was often with a twenty-eight. At least a few of my sections were in that twenty-eight. Now, I come from Maryland, where I hit thirty-two, thirty-five, let's not go there. Yeah, when I bring the child and the desk into your classroom.
I do want to say one thing, it does seem like they tried to get the information at the beginning, but with, you know, with the surveys, and that was the, I think, the criticism of the surveys that had been done in the twenty-one, twenty-two year of students, but I think that with such a hypothetical thing, it's hard for us to get our heads around. And I know that some of the letters that we got, the comp that we got tonight, like, there's some misinformation as part of that. One thing is, I won't be able to compete with students from other divisions if my division does this, and that's just not the case, isn't my understanding. So I think that there, I went into this basically thinking like, it's possible, there's every possibility that this could be something that works for us. I don't think that people understand it, I certainly don't, I would say, understand what, exactly what it would look like, what the plus one means, does that mean that, you know, the peer tutoring would be nullified, you know, those kinds of things. I just don't think that that's made clear enough right now to me. And again, I recognize that part of it is because it's hypothetical, like, you couldn't put out a schedule, because then everyone would be like, oh, well, that schedule slugs for this reason. Also, I understand, I had asked Jay for the number of credits that people graduate with, thinking that that was a simple question, learning that it is not, learning that the range is vast and way above thirty-two, which is what I would think that it would cap out at. So always learning, but, so I think it's just, it's very complicated, and again, from my standpoint, it's very possible that this could be something that is helpful in various ways, but I just don't know that.
I'd echo the fact that I've heard a lot of confusion and misinformation from students. A lot of the kids I've talked to have been worried about what it will look like to colleges.
Right.
And I, honestly, it wasn't something I really understood until this year, applying to college, about the idea of a school profile, and it's just not something kids understand about not being compared to kids out of district. And I also have heard a lot of concerns about being able to get that advanced diploma.
So is there anything else that you wanted to present to us? I guess we could, if there was a motion around this, anyone wanted to make, or if we did not make a motion at all?
I'm unclear whether this is a governance thing or operational thing, so whether or not we would vote on this anyway. I mean, I know they wanted our input, but I was just unclear about that, because I don't want us stepping in operational stuff if we can at all avoid it.
It was in two thousand and eleven or whatever, it was one of our, it was a governance thing and none, so I assume that it would be now.
Well, that was because the overarching rationale was budget.
Was the budget.
And it wasn't, it wasn't, the decision to go to eight was for the budgetary reasons, which is definitely our point of view.
Would any of the...
So the issue now is, for me, what is the best academic path for both students and, and teachers, and I don't feel I quite understand it, I'm still generally favorable, but I would be more interested in tabling it for some more thought about the impacts. And I think if we would go in that direction, we need to do a much better job in messaging, because I think there is enormous amount of confusion, as Opal was just talking about, and, I mean, I am concerned that the only letters we got were people talking about electives, when we've got eighty-three percent of our kids in study hall, you know. So, so is that a representative sample? I mean, it's one of the clear benefits of this schedule, but is it representative? I don't know that.
So I think, I think it is operational, I just think it's really critical for the board to weigh in, because as you can see, you know, just, just by virtue of having the conversation, we've had a lot of input, and we wanted to be sure that. You had a chance to talk directly to the staff that really, I think, have, have the most knowledge of school operations when it comes to secondary school. My, my, I've, I've had conversations with all the principals, I obviously read what comes in, I've read a lot from what the teachers are sending in, and I've been having a lot more, as you, as you know, I'm very much in favor of having a seven-period academic schedule for a lot of reasons. But I was having a conversation with one of my contemporaries today, and he said, well, you know, Matt, the real issue is here, people don't miss what they never had. So like, if I said to somebody in here, I think we should all chuck our cellphones out the window and move on, no one, very few people, with the exception of, you know, probably about half of us, have ever gone, you know, my first, I guess, thirty-five, forty years of my life, I didn't have a cellphone. And so I know what it's like to not have one and how great it is, and so, yeah, people would be like, but, so most people that went through that would be like, yeah, man, get rid of it. But if the other remaining people would be like, are you kidding me? This is all I know, it's all I've ever experienced, you cannot take this away from me, it's got so many choices in it, they don't know that it's actually the harm that it's doing them, and we know that it's doing harm. So what I would say is that although I'm in favor of it, I, you know, and I do know that most of the administrators that I've talked to would like to see something different, to raise, to diminish the stress level of students and diminish the stress level of staff, that recommending, like, something that turns, really feels like turning everything on its head, is not a good idea. There's, the other thing that's developed in the midst of all this is that we do know that we're going to have a ten-million-dollar difference in our funding coming from the state this year and next year, and while we say that we would hold, it would be a budget-neutral decision, I mean, we've enjoyed over the past several years a lot of flexibility in our budgeting. So someone comes in and says, man, my high school, all of a sudden, things have blown up with the different classes, we could usually do something about it in the current budget year, I'm worried about that. So I think that's a big X-factor that's been introduced. I think what I've been hearing from board members in this conversation is a desire to slow the roll, and also, you know, a lot of the comments that I heard from Mr. Bonham, you know, I take to heart that part of, part of the issue here is that we are, and I have too, or maybe I have, and other people have too, been looking at this as an either-or, right? It's, it's either going to be seven, or it's going to be eight, whereas, I had a great conversation with Rosalind the other day, and she said, well, isn't there, aren't there ways to figure out where the base teacher can teach five, and then other teachers that want to teach six could have the extra pay, but you don't build it in as like a, such a, such an extreme one-off, like, that, that you, that it doesn't happen, right? It could be more frequent, because there may be teachers that want to make an extra twenty percent of their pay to take on that extra class, and then you build out decisions where they could offer them in the evening, like Dara is doing, you can offer them in the summertime, we have true, we could have true summer programming. There just seems like this is the beginning of a conversation, and, and we shouldn't be trying to make it the end of a conversation. So I think it's a beginning, and I think we do have a lot more work to do, we, as Dr. Berlin said, we should involve the students more about what they're interested in doing, because we didn't ask them in the survey, would you be interested in taking a class before nine o'clock? Would you be interested in taking a class after the normal school hours? Would you be interested in taking a full class in the summertime with a teacher? So we need to find that out, because I think we could be taking a lot more advantage of everybody's experiences of what they miss and what they don't miss, or what they have, and come up with something better that's not, that's one of the biggest criticisms of the American public high school, is it is just a, it's just like a factory, and that's where, whether you have seven or eight, if it's still blocks, if it's still those things, then it's still a factory. I will say this, though, I do think things do need to change. They've got to change. Our data on student engagement in, in, in America, not just in Albemarle, the most engaged kids are kindergartners, the least engaged kids are seniors. I'm not saying it should be the other way around, it should be engagement, 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 engagement. The least engaged students right now in our school system are seniors. That is not what we want for people that are about to step out the door and go on to, as Chad says, what's, what are they going to do the next day? If we don't, when you have children going to college that are disengaged, that's, that's a recipe for disaster. Half of our students that go off to college do not finish in five years, or four years, half of them, okay? And that's a fact. It's, and it's like thirty-six percent for boys, for young men that go off to college, okay? So we've got to do something. I don't, I, but I don't think it's this right now, I think this right now would do more to stir up more issues that would get us to the point where we can be creative in our problem solving. So I, I feel like this has been valuable to have the principals here tonight. I hope if, if some of the things I've said, if it kind of caused you to have maybe another question or something else you're interested in, maybe another five minutes or so, if you want to ask them something different, but I really appreciate you all coming out. Beth, it sounds like you've got a frog in you. I hope you're okay. Any more questions for the principals?
Does the, did the survey data seem to match what you thought it would?
A lot of us had done, like, I did two days of planning period faculty meeting, so I met in small groups with my staff, and it does seem to match, and you could just hear the tug, we kept saying it was the quintessential opportunity cost issue.
Yeah.
My experience as a student at Western, I, my experience was that more people are opposed to seven-plus-one than is represented in the data, at least among the student body, which is interesting considering that Western has the high... Which is interesting, considering that Western has the highest rates of study halls.
I mean, I think part of this whole discussion is because built into our strategic plan is we were going to research whether to flip this, and it was an either-or question. And like, what Matt has just said is, the question should be, how can we address teacher needs better, so they can teach our kids better? I mean, I absolutely thank you all for being here, and thank Jay for sort of leading the charge on this. But I think part of the problem is, we asked the wrong question.
Yeah. Yeah. Dr. McLaughlin pointed out to me, because we all talk about artifacts and absolutes, the bell schedule is an artifact.
Yeah.
We should be talking more about what are the absolutes, which, which would be extra time and support. It would be lots of choices for kids. It would be removing barriers. It would be taking advantage of the twenty-four hour day, so that we could spread things out for people. So we, we got to get back to the absolutes for, for kids.
The other thing I would say, Nat, is I think we need to think about this for all, like, these teacher constraints, and you guys, that like, are, are hitting everyone. It's hitting our elementary teachers, and our middle schools, and our high school. And so part of this is, is there a way, this was a, you know, this was a solution that, that was the other piece that this bothered me a little bit, is that this is, would only help our high schoolers. And I think most of the C E, people had to go back to, to families with young kids. But, you know, one of the things we hear in elementary, but particularly in special ed, is so many of those teachers, you know, like, don't have any planning time, because there's so much kid contact, because there isn't someone else who can cover for that child with autism. And then even in some of our elementary schools, parent teachers without a true planning period. And so thinking about comprehensively, about how do we meet those planning and those P L C needs of all of our teachers, so there's some more equity there as well.
You had started this with asking, what's the argument to go to seven plus one? And it's, you know, when we start thinking about what that extra period can be, intervention fine, enrichment's the other piece, and giving students that time outside of their normal classes to do something cool, to go to internships and mentorships and built-in like that. And it's one of the reasons I think a lot of our students take study halls, is because they have jobs, you know? How do you, how could you do something with that extra period that really rewards all students? The, the other piece, and Matt alluded to it, what does a zero period look like? What does a night class look like? What is a, the teacher that teaches eight to two versus the teacher that teaches, you know, ten to, to five? We, there are students who would love that opportunity. I know all the swimmers that I used to have as a classroom teacher, they're ready to start school at six-thirty, because they've been up since four o'clock. And, and so those, they go and take naps, you know, before the day even starts. And so what, what would that, what could we do differently there to really engage teachers? And I, I appreciate the passion of the, the young man who came and spoke about the Mesa program, but Mesa was created on a seven-period schedule. It was built, and, and those students, you know, were able to participate in band for four years, in choir for four years. So it's, it's not, it, yes, we have thirty-two opportunities, we're taking away four to make it twenty-eight, but at the same time, if we could re-envision how those are offered, we're not losing anything, but, but that requires a lot more planning than, than maybe we've done to this.
I would agree. And I think that, would offer that the college admissions impact is, is a substantial question to consider, but, but from a different point of view than, than I think we often think about it. There's an inverse relationship in the power, the dynamics that college admissions, selective college admissions, has on what we do in secondary schools versus the, the few students that are actually applying to them. And I think that when, to, to Dr. Ha's point, when we're, when we're putting something on the table that feels like it's taking something away, we, we don't know what the risk is. And fear of change often comes with, with the unknown risk. And if, if we are more confident about what the impact is on college admissions, and in general, knowing that college admissions drives ultimately what secondary schools do across this country, particularly the last thirty, forty years, then I think we can, students and, and teachers also can maybe take that into consideration, too. I say that as a, as a parent who's, has been going through this process the last couple of years. And, and just so much of what we do in public secondary schools is driven by selective college admissions, that only a very few number of kids are going to.
You know, in addition to the alternatives that you're talking about, about nighttime, about, you know, before the day starts, and other situations, I'd like to bring up probably from my last time, the con- the concept of the twelve-month calendar. Where there are-
Your swan song here. You've got to get it in one more time.
There are opportunities for students to get rest, there are opportunities for the teachers to get, you know, know that they're going to get three weeks off at the end of each marking period, or four weeks off, whatever that all works out to be. You know, it's, it's something that needs to be, the, the teachers need to buy into that first. The parents need to buy into that, you know, but it, but first is, is, is the teachers. And I still would love to see, and we've got teachers and, and principals in this county who have taught, or worked, or run twelve-month schools. And so there is experience here with that. And I know that the pilot, you know, is, is being considered for one of our schools. So just throwing that out.
You just reminded me, John, too, just going down memory lane, we, we, remember we, one of my first long-term experiences with you was we took a field trip up to Fairfax County to visit the Thomas Jefferson School. And they ran a seven-period schedule there with the eighth, eighth period every other day, like we ran at Alamoah High School when I was the principal there. And then we brought that back to the board and talked about that. But we were pretty amazed at all the cool stuff that was going on.
Absolutely. Twenty seventeen.
I'd like to thank Mr. Thomas for putting in all this work and bringing us all this information. I feel like we've been, we've been kind of put, talking about this for a couple of years, and it's like, finally, we're like, at least get some good information. So thank you very much.
I think we're in a good place, right? We know, we know we got to do something different. What is it, right? Maybe this wasn't it? Maybe there's components of this that isn't. You know? So I think we need to continue the conversation is the, probably the most important part.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
We have a ten-minute break. Yay! So we'll see you back at eight-thirty-one.
Thank you, guys.
Back to order. Next, we have the Southern Feeder Pattern Elementary School Schematic Design, Lindsay Snoddy.
Good evening. I'm Lindsay Snoddy, Director of Building Services, and we're excited to present to you today the schematic design for the new Southern Feeder Pattern Elementary School. I'm joined this evening by our architects, V M D O with Kelly Callahan and Ken Thacko with us, and also Seth Knod will be leading this presentation from the instructional side. So we'll start with a brief project overview, and then Seth will discuss the grade level configuration that we're recommending for the new school, and then V M D O will take it away with the proposed schematic design for the new facility. We always like to start with our strategic plan and with our vision and mission and how we're supporting the vision and mission with our design of this elementary school. We're looking, the school will definitely provide a place for thriving students. We'll touch on the community engagement that we went through to affirm and empower our communities as we design the school, and also providing equitable and transformative research, our resources through this school design. Brief overview of the project, the new elementary school is needed to address overcrowding in Mountain View Elementary. It's scheduled to open in August 2026, and the total project budget is forty-four point one million. And I'll turn it over to Seth to talk through the grade level configuration that we spent a lot of time on as we did this design.
Good everyone, I am Seth Knod, the Principal of Mountain View. I am excited to share the research that we've had and the community engagement we've had around what to do with this new school right next to ours. So to start with the end in mind, we are recommending that we have a split configuration of a pre-K through second school at the current Mountain View site, and a third through fifth grade model at the new Southern Feeder Pattern site. And we'll talk about the community engagement, the research we've done to get to that conclusion. But in short, we've really worked hard to make sure that all members of our community have been engaged in this process, from faculty and staff, community members, ensuring that when we go and get feedback and we ask questions, we're getting representative feedback from all aspects of our community. We did that through several meetings, through surveys, and community level engagement to ensure that we're hearing all voices. So this is a busy slide, but I'll tell you, we looked at both models. Are we looking at a traditional school where we redistrict? Or we're looking at a different model for our county, not different for the region or for the country, but for our county, but looking at a split model. So when we look at the traditional model, the pros we saw with that and the feedback from our constituents was really, it's known to the county. It's something that we've always done. It requires some redistricting, but there'd be less transitions for students. So the split model after second grade, students would have a transition to a new site for a third grade. It also could have some issues of family logistics if students were split. However, if we have traditional model, generally families are redistricted, all their students are in one school during elementary years. The cons with that model would be that the southern area of our county, as we know, is very fast growing. There's development in different portions of it, so it requires some redistricting. And with that, there could be some equity concerns about the demographics of those two sites. The campuses are actually touching each other, or as Matt Werben likes to say, that campuses are kissing. They're very small areas touching, so there's a potential that students could be riding a bus to one school and passing another school. And the immersion program at our school was a big piece of community feedback that was important. So when we look at surveying our community, we heard that the diversity of the school, and secondly, the immersion program, were the most important to our parents and to our students. So if we were to have a traditional model, those could both be at risk depending on how redistricting goes and what instructional program was taken. And finally, the concern about community was if we redistrict now, and then the development continues, we have to get it perfect, otherwise we're just doing it in the future. When we look at the potential of a pre-K through second grade and that third through fifth grade model, it would allow us to maintain an instructional program for students that is continuous through both sites. It could avoid potential equity issues with redistricting, including when that growth is continuing to happen, we could absorb that. We could have development for professional development for teachers based on developmental needs of our students. So the pre-K through second grade could be really heavily focused on literacy and those developmental needs, where third through fifth could focus on some more content area. It would allow our staff to maintain their work with students they're having currently, so when the schools were to split, they continue with those students. The community would not be split, which is a big piece of parent feedback, and finally give us some flexibility so as the area grows, we can work with that. Now, the cons with that is additional student transition. And what's interesting with this is parents were concerned and teachers were concerned about, okay, we're adding an additional transition after second grade instead of after fifth. And looking at some statistics, we found that less than half, on average, for the last five years of our students have stayed with us from kindergarten through fifth grade. So transition is there. This would be adding one, but something that we're used to doing and we've gotten pretty good at. And finally, there's some, having students that may be in kindergarten, another student in third grade, parents get two different sites to contend with. We've talked with Roslyn and her team about possibly having some shuttles between, so parents have one drop off and one pickup in the morning. And we think we can do that because we consolidate some transportation between two school sites. So we've done a lot of supportive research with this, working through the E A B, and Dr. Kastner recommended several principles of current schools within this model. We find that the biggest feedback we received is that teachers' collaboration and targeted professional development for this model reallows schools to be very specific, instead of looking at sixth grade levels, looking at three, and getting really good at the needs for the students at those grade levels. We can adjust staffing between sites based on enrollment. We can also really focus on achievement, and research has shown that with this model, especially with K through two literacy, students perform better because of a school-wide focus on those areas. And finally, the communication between sites is really important. So community feedback said, we love this idea, we want to keep our community intact, we want to keep our diversity intact, we have to ensure that when we do this, both sites are working closely together. So if we were to go this route, we work closely the next couple of years as we develop the site to ensure the leadership between schools and instructional program is matched in a way that the experience for our students is continuous and comprehensive, and we get all the support that they need. Thanks.
I'm Kelly Callahan. I'm an architect with V M D O Architects here in Charlottesville, Virginia, and I'm thrilled to be here tonight and share the progress that we've made thus far on the schematic design of the Southern Feeder Pattern. And I want to start out by saying tonight's session is really informational only, we're not asking for a decision to be made. We'll be back again in January and ask for authorization to proceed at that time. So this is really just a project informational update for you. V M D O is an architecture firm here in Charlottesville. We're about eighty employees between here and an office, a small office in DC. We've been doing this for almost fifty years, and our focus is exclusively on education. We've worked with Albemarle County for decades on many significant projects over the years, and most recently completed the renovation and expansion of Crowe's Elementary School together. This is us standing on the steps at the library in Charlottesville in downtown, right across the street from our office. We are a group of folks who care deeply about the local schools because we're married to teachers and our children go to these schools, and some of us have children ourselves that teach in these schools. And so it's not only our passion as educational designers, this place is something that we're very vested in. So a schedule at a glance, we got notice to proceed in August, and we are here in the blue line at the school board presentation concluding schematic design phase, which is the first phase of design in January. We'll continue to design and document this project through September of next year, at which time we'll go out to bid to contractors. And this is a designed bid-build process, so the bidding will happen, we'll get a contractor on board, and we'll get under construction about a year from now. And then that construction is scheduled to take about a year and a half. So occupancy, as Lindsay noted, is August 2026. As we noted also, there's been a lot of community engagement going on. There's been student surveys, physical surveys, there's online surveys, we've done in-person engagement with your staff, met with the P T O at Mountain View Elementary School, and we've developed a steering committee in addition to the design committee, which is district-level leadership that guides us every two weeks. We have a steering committee that is made up of educational staffs that are guiding us as well as special folks, what do we call them, stakeholder, stakeholders that have been coming in to talk about very detailed things involving everything from food service to audiovisual to safety and security. And the first time that we met together with the leadership, we really reflected on A C P S's mission and vision statement and came up with these top visioning goals for the project, and they are health and well-being, environmental stewardship, a sense of community and belonging, hands-on learning opportunities or authentic learning opportunities, and the equitable distribution of resources. And we've used these five as sort of the pillars of how we've reflected on how space can support these goals in the project in all of the engagement sessions that we've done. And they've looked something like this, this is us making connections presentation, where we take those five pillars or goals and we throw on the wall images of how we as architects and space planners feel like space can support those goals. And then we select, we get feedback from folks on what that means to them, and there are opportunities to vote with dots and write comments. And so we also did online family surveys, and so we've got a few pie charts to reflect on some of the overall, there's a lot of information that was collected. Seth was very successful in getting students, I think there were over eight hundred paper surveys that we assessed and compiled, and there is a Q R code somewhere in this presentation, but it will also obviously be posted on your website where you can look at those full results in more detail. But we asked how those new school spaces should make students feel, and we asked about several different spaces within the school. But you can see it's a fairly distributed weight, but certainly safe and welcome was priority, and we heard over and over again how proud of the diversity this community is and how they want to really welcome families into this school. Excited and inspired, curious and playful, and calm and focused, and those all have a place in schools, as we know. What makes you feel welcome at school? This is from the third to fifth grade student surveys, and this is a word, so the more times a word was written, the bigger that word is on this graph, and you can see that friends and teachers, and I think Seth, you're in there somewhere too, really little bit, yeah? Starbucks, which is also a place that makes people comfortable. And where do you feel safe and welcome? What space? Home came up over and over again. And so we've kind of translated that into some takeaways, the classroom and maybe the takeaways are here. But the takeaways basically are that our spaces need to shape space for students so that they feel comforted. We need to create small spaces where students feel like they have autonomy and they're comforted in the spaces. And there were some other really great takeaways, ways that we can shape space in order to respond to the students' preferences. This is an aerial view of the site, and you see Monticello High School is the blue dot up top, a Mountain View Elementary School to the left, and the site, as we said, kisses the toe of Mountain View Elementary School's backyard. And so we have access from the north off of Mill Creek Drive, and it's a beautiful wooded site. It's got significant topography to it, and so there's been some interesting influences on that site. We know we're going to bring cars and buses in from the north, past the fire station, and so we're going to zoom in just a little bit here. And so we've sort of segmented the site, taking into consideration some, a lot of factors, but some critical ones are really that there's significant topography on the site, so we're sort of terracing the site down the hill. We want to make the building as compact as possible in order to make it energy efficient, and we want to separate cars and buses as quickly as possible for safety. We want to separate pedestrians, cars, and buses on site, and so we've zoned the site with parking and queuing happening and making that queuing line as long as possible to get cars off of the road to the north. The building sits about in the middle of the site, and then the buses are taken down to the southern end of the site to enter from actually two different levels. So as the building steps down the hill, and you'll see this in the section, we're able to bring parents and families and kids in on two different levels and kind of separate that congestion at the beginning and the end of the day, have staging opportunities, but also keep more kids close to the ground. So cars come in from the north and queue up on blue, and buses circle down to the bottom of the site and out, and we've worked with your transportation folks on that. There's a fire lane to the right, playfields fall off to the east near the Learning Wings, and some hardscape and softscape places that surround the building, trying to create a U-ten athletic field as well, which would be a great community asset there along the road. So if we zoom into the floor plan quickly, what we're trying to do with the floor plan are kind of some three top goals of this are to right-size those learning communities. This school is for about five hundred students. We want to right-size those learning communities, and at this point, we've really been focusing on designing for a K through five school, not having the results of the survey yet. So what you're seeing are some different size spaces based on K one or two through five, but right-sizing those learning communities, orienting those learning communities so that we can control glare and let in natural daylight as much as possible. So orientation is critical. And then stepping down the hill, allowing the building to kind of engage that topography. So in general, we have Learning Wings in blue to the right, and then whole school shared spaces along that main east, north-south spine connecting the school together on multiple levels. So the gym, the library, and the dining commons steps down the level, art and music, administration, eyes on the street right up front. So if we step down one floor level, we're against a retaining wall, but all of the learning spaces have abundant natural daylight windows, and the blue arrows show ways out of the building to proximal playfields and learning spaces. And the big yellow space there at the bottom is the dining commons, so that's kind of a destination room that you arrive at. It's got abundant glass, and that orients your view to that beautiful view of Carter's Mountain to the south and to the east. That's sort of the destination moment in the school. Back up to level one to orient you, front doors all the way up top, and there are open stairs that get you up to an upper floor level, which again stacks learning spaces and distributed student services. And we've embedded special education spaces within the learning communities, integrating those into the spaces. And then if we cut a section, a slice, right through the building, and we're looking north now, cutting east-west, on the left is the gym, the middle circulation, and then the Learning Wing beyond, you're seeing the library is a two-story space. And then the building is also strategically located on the site to avoid as much as possible blasting rock, which you can see in section here that there's some bedrock that's happening, and it steps down the site, so we're positioning the building well to try to eliminate that. So quickly, taking a look at some exterior elevation views of the building, these are two-dimensional views, but we're standing on the north side of the building, looking at the front door, administration on the right, you're seeing the gym to the right beyond, the Learning Wing to the left with the classroom windows spinning around clockwise, so we're looking from the east now at the building, and we're seeing basically deep into the courtyard where the library has a lot of glass, and there's an outdoor classroom there, and the ends of the Learning Wings with the stairs coming out to the play spaces. Continuing on to the south now, we're seeing the end of that Dining Commons in the middle, the edge of the Learning Wing to the right, art and music to the left, and the gymnasium beyond. And I think here we'll also mention that the building is, we're aiming for net zero energy-ready, which means that we're designing a very energy-efficient building, and we're also providing roof scape, shaping the building, if you will, so that it's ideally oriented and open and steps so that no roof shades another roof, so that that roof is ready for photovoltaics when and if the district can get those. And then the final elevation, the west elevation with Carter's Mountain etched in beyond, that's the gymnasium in the middle, you're seeing the profile of the dining roof to the right and the administration to the left. And a couple of quick interior views as well, so standing in the lobby here, looking back toward the front door. These are very early. Looking down the corridor toward the Dining Commons now with the library on the left. And then down in that Dining Commons, the servery is on the right, and you're seeing out the landscape beyond, so Carter's Mountain would be in the distant view here. So, I thought dollars. We have a construction budget, a much larger project budget, but the construction budget is slated at seventy-one point seven-five million, sorry, thirty-one point seven-five million dollars. We got an initial cost estimate, which was rather jarring, it's schematic design at forty-three million, and the team has worked, the architects and the engineers, along with the district leadership, to come up with value engineering ideas, ways that we can squeeze and save and optimize the design, and those accepted options fall somewhere within the three-point-seven to five-point-five million, getting us down to an adjusted cost estimate of thirty-seven-five to thirty-nine point three million. So the dollars per square foot there are shown in gray, the current funding gap is under the blue line to get back to the thirty-one point seven-five million. And the question probably on everybody's mind is, are we alone? Is this an outlier? Is this normal? This sounds like a lot of money. I've got an asterisk here because the schematic design and all the costs we're going to look at reflect a seven-point-nine percent escalation to the midpoint of construction, which is our cost estimator's best guess of what the change in escalation will be between now and the midpoint of construction, which is when our bidders will put their dollars toward. And so what we did was some quick look around, we looked at the Virginia Department of Education Construction Report from 2023. These are projects that bid during 2023, one of them in December of 22, and we've escalated those costs out to the midpoint of our construction, and you can see the average on the right is just over five hundred dollars a square foot. These are big numbers. Construction has escalated significantly in the last three years. So yeah, this just highlights the bid date and the escalated cost and time. And then one other point of reference that we wanted to offer is a most recently, a Chesterfield County Elementary School that bid just this month also coming in, if we escalate that dollar per square foot, it's very close to five hundred dollars a square Lindsay?
So next steps, we typically
So next steps, we typically don't bring a project with a funding gap to schematic design, but we did want to bring it to make sure we keep this project on schedule because the schedule is critically important. Between now and the next meeting, we will continue to identify additional cost savings to see how we can get it without sacrificing scope and the space. So that's really important to us as well. And we will bring an update to the January 11th meeting. We'll open it up for any questions from the board.
Super in the weeds, but how many elevators are in the building?
Two.
Thank you. And they both do all floors?
We offered that as a value engineering, and that was next, to go to one. But yes, they go to all three floors. That's right.
Thanks.
With the items that are being looked at to cut back with cost savings, how severe are those? I mean, this isn't dumbing down the building, I'm sure, but how severe is it being stripped for lack? I'm using dramatic words, but I'm not trying to make it that way.
In order to get you to the budget of $31.75, they would need to be very severe, more than anybody wants to consider. The design committee met for a couple of hours last week to go over a long list of, you know, some very creative solutions. And most of them were rejected as being something that would be inconsistent with the program of the planned school. I told the design committee when we met that day that when the RFP was issued for the project with a budget of $435 a square foot, I thought to myself, finally, we're going to have a project where we don't have to wrestle with the budget all the way through design. Sadly, I was wrong. Construction escalation has continued at an unprecedented rate.
I appreciate us trying to keep the scope of it because we have historically built too small.
Yeah.
So we just need to keep that. I'm sure that you're keeping that in mind as you wrestle with all of these things.
Well, and I'll add, in addition to identifying additional cost savings, we are continuing to find additional opportunities to fund the project. There's two sides of that equation. No obvious answers at this point. But as Lindsay alluded, the schedule is pretty critical. So we felt like we needed to at least have a conversation. If we're on the right track with the design, continue to work on the funding side.
Do we know either Lindsay or Rosalind, anybody, what the cost estimates for any of the construction projects the county has underway? Or is this, do we have comparison data? I'm trying to check their level of understanding.
Yeah. The most recent tried comparable project that we've had bid would be the Mountain View cafeteria expansion, which at this point is already a year old. So there's no real recent data. What I can say is that we do have several other comparable projects in the design process. And so we will be getting other cost estimates from other projects, and we'll be able to compare those. It's not hard bid data. We do, we are in the beginning stages of our maintenance program bidding season. So far, we've only had two projects come in. The remainder will be coming in in January and February. Of the two that came in, they were both electrical maintenance projects. One was on budget, the other was twice over budget. And both received multiple bids. So it's not, we're not in a situation where there's a lack of competition. That's just where the market is. And so...
You did on local government projects?
I don't, the most recent one they had was the Quartz project. And that was a different delivery method because they did a CM at risk delivery method, which typically has a slightly higher cost per square foot just because of the risk that the contractor is assuming in that delivery method. I don't know what those numbers are. We'd be happy to get that information from our colleagues on the local government side and share that with the board. I just, I don't have it handy.
I was just trying to assess their understanding of the escalating costs in terms of their willingness to... I mean, the budget we set for this was set, what, two years ago, three years ago? So it was obvious some growth in cost just because we didn't get on it right away. I think the design looks beautiful.
So do you have any feedback and question on the design or the grade configuration? I think we're looking for some direction on...
It's great. Yeah, I think the grade configuration makes total sense, especially with that community, you know, not wanting to split it and then spending it the right way. Yeah, and also having, I like the idea of having, you know, the real, I mean, all of it around literacy, but you know, the K through, pre-K through two, really concentrating on that. I like all of this.
Mr. Canard, as the principal of two buildings to be, what are your thoughts on this?
I think the, I think the community really nailed down exactly the same concerns I have professionally and personally, which is it's a very tricky community to split perfectly, and it's a dynamic community. I think this is our best shot at doing it the right way. At the same time, I think as we make improvements to how we teach reading and how we engage our community, this allows those to continue forward without resetting. So I think it's, I think it's a really good and creative solution, unique to our county, but not unique to a lot of counties.
I have a process question. Do we, do you share this similar kind of presentation with the board of supervisors?
We do not.
Now, the money is appropriated to the school board, so that's the last action. So the next piece is if we were to request additional money from the board of supervisors, we would act.
Yeah. I mean, I just, to this point, right, like both the understanding of where budgets are, but also the like, this is what our, you know, myself, but like, this is what our kids deserve. Like, we can't cut this. Like, we're in a, you know, vulnerable area of our community. And this is what the kids need, and this is what all of our kids need going forward. So.
So thank you, and we hope we find money. To our best.
All right, next we have our FY '23 fourth quarter financial report.
Good evening, board members. I'm Jackson Zimmerman. I'm your school finance officer, presenting for your... Okay. Presenting for your consideration, the fourth quarter year-end financial report. We have, we have gone through a successful audit so far. It has been painful at times, but we have, we have done it with new auditors, and I think we've come forward with something very good. But wanted to provide you with some information about how the year ended finished. We did have a very strong fiscal year. We, in terms of revenues, we did, we did fairly well with revenues. The big issue associated with the current year is that we had lower-than-expected expenditures. We've been discussing this throughout the year, and we did finish the year with lower-than-expected expenditures. So we did generate a fair number, a fair amount of fund balance that's associated with it. I'll just head down to the very end of the report, since we're running a little bit late this evening. Unless there are any particular questions on the individual line items that are associated here. We do have, we started off with $14 million starting fund balance. We had revenues and expenses. In revenues, they do not count budgeted use of fund balance as a revenue received because we have actually already received that revenue. We had $11 million worth of fund balance budgeted for revenue, but it's not shown as being received in the financial report because we already have it. So if you look at the school fund revenues, that number should be $11 million higher comparing to what you actually plan to spend. Expenses are $7 million greater than what was originally, what was actually incurred because of the way local government handles fund balance. So that's why you see that $7 million less inter-fund, fund balance transfer. They transfer parts of our fund balance to a special revenue fund that they maintain. And that's a $7 million individual transaction that happens at the very, very bitter end of the year. So expenses are really $240 million when you look at overall expenses. We did exceed the 2% threshold that the board of supervisors has established by policy. And that results in just over $4 million being transferred out from the school fund balance to other uses. CIP is typically the use that has been planned for these funds at the end of fiscal years. We do anticipate having a 2%, the 2% fund balance that is permitted to be retained by policy is just over $5.1 million at the end of this fiscal year of unallocated school fund balance. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just like any major categories for why, for the areas that we had lower-than-expected expenditures?
So wide range of items. The largest component by far is our compensation and benefits. So there are a wide range of reasons behind that. An awful lot of them is due to relatively large variations from when people quit to when a new hire is made. And finding qualified staff can be very, very difficult. And last year, we didn't start fully, fully staffed like we did this year. So this year may be quite a different year than last year. Last year, we, we had a lot of vacancies. We still do carry numbers of vacancies. Just as an example, in my department, I'm carrying a vacancy for almost six months that I have been unable to fill. So that's the primary reason behind that.
Yeah, Jackson, could you go up to the written summary that you had near the top?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the third paragraph, wait a minute. Okay, one on expenses, where you said overall compensation benefits, $4.5 million. What two figures, I tried to find what two figures I had to look at to get that $4.5 million. So what two were there?
So... That can't be derived very quickly from this report.
Okay. Because I was looking at the ones at the top, and I couldn't see it anywhere. Okay, all right. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? I can answer them, otherwise, if you could, if you made a motion to receive this report, move on to the first one.
I remember we received the fourth quarter report as presented.
A second.
Mr. Lowes, seconded by Dr. Berlin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First, so moved. Thank you, Jackson.
Thank you, Jackson.
I'll follow up with the next report, which is the first quarter report. First quarter report, we don't have an awful lot of transactions that take place in the first quarter. When you look at the first quarter, the first, the first two months, we are not really in operation. And then only in the third month do we get into some serious operations. We don't have enough data to do forward-looking projections. But what we do have is we do have a quick snapshot. The two things that really, the one thing that really does sort of stick out here is that right now, our enrollment is a bit less than originally anticipated. We are not exactly sure how that's going to affect state revenues because state revenues are derived from local school enrollment. Right now, we're just not anticipating a change in it at the moment. But we, that is just something to watch. And you'll see projections being brought forward on the second, on the second quarter financial reports. The other thing that's, that's part of this, part of the first quarter report is we look on our special revenue funds. There are some very large negative fund balances associated with the special revenue funds. And this has to do with receivables. So federal grants are always, always reimbursed after the fact, often very significantly far after the fact. And so what we're seeing with our special revenues is a very large receivable that's out there. We booked that revenue in FY '23. We're waiting to receive it, and we will receive it, but it just hasn't been received as of September. We would expect to see a large component of that revenue received in the second quarter. And the last, the last area that we really wanted to cover is fund balance. This does tie back to the origin, to the ending fund balance associated with the fourth quarter report. So this is the initial audited fund balance that we have of $13 million. We have an appropriated use of fund balance of $3.5 million. We have POs being brought forward. Part of that. And so that gives us $9 million there. And then out of that, that $4 million that we had that was going to, that is being held potentially for CIP, there are, there are probably a wide range of uses that are possible for that. Very possible that staff may be bringing forward suggestions for use of that $4.1 million of money to be split, some going to the healthcare fund, some going toward funding some one-time costs associated with a clinic, and then some going to CIP. Additional information will be brought forward regarding any planned uses or planned requests for the, for the board of supervisors to use this money in any way. But this is just a precursor for further discussion and items that are going to be brought forward to you in the future.
Any questions?
I should know this, but what, the second line, original fiscal year '23, '24 appropriated use of fund balance?
That actually should be '24, '25, yes, '23, '24. So we appropriate use of fund balance in our current budget.
And that's the amount?
That's the amount that the school board passed as far as its adopted budget. The revenue that we were planning on using fund balance in our current budget.
Jackson, can I say back something I heard you say? So basically, when we exceed our, when we exceed the 2% on fund balance, it doesn't go like into necessarily, it doesn't just go into like thin air of overall local government stuff like CIP, things like that. We have the opportunity to say, well, it's exceeded, it's exceeded our fund balance. However, we would like to, since, since local government has fiduciary control over the health insurance, for example, and they say, well, we need an infusion to keep it at the level that we deem necessary to keep it solvent. So we need funding to be infused, then we can say, we can potentially say, well, would you take that out of the 2%? So it's, it's, it's not just going into nowhere. It gets used for things that otherwise we might have to take out of estimated fund balance moving forward. Is that what, is that what you were saying?
Yes, sir. The, you know, the $4.1 million that's going, that has the potential of going into CIP, the school board can request its use for other things. The board of supervisors doesn't have to meet the school board's request, but the school board can certainly request its use in that area. And I think that local government also has similar needs as well, and we'll be bringing forward some items on this at the same time.
What you mean when, when you mean they have, they have needs and they also address it through exceeding what they consider, do they have, what's their, do they have a cap on their fund balance?
They do not have a cap on their fund balance. They traditionally do, do take action regarding their fund They traditionally do, do take action regarding their fund balance and then transfer the remaining dollars over to CIP.
Thanks.
So do we have a motion to accept this for information?
I move that we accept the first quarter financial report as presented. Second.
Moved by Mr. Alkarov, seconded by Mr. Page. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thanks so much, Jackson.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the FY '25 budget development and compensation update. Maya Kumazawa, and Brody Downs.
Good evening, I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning, and I'm here for, to get your preliminary budget input for the development of the FY '25 budget. This evening, I'm going to go over what we know about revenues so far, what we know about expenditures so far, and that'll include an update on our market for compensation. I'll also go over the community feedback we've received thus far for your consideration of what your priorities are, and then we'll have time for discussion in the end. So our, as you know, our budget aligns with our strategic plan, and specifically, we align with Goal Three of the strategic plan, equitable transformative resources with the specific objectives of attracting, developing, and retaining the highest quality staff and providing resources in an equitable manner. So we'll be addressing those two objectives this evening. So we'll start first with revenue drivers. This is a chart of historical transfers from local government. And as you can see, we've had pretty significant increases in the past couple of years. What the forecast is going into next year is an increase that reflects that of average historical levels. So right now, the prediction is a 5.6% increase. And if that's realized, that would provide an additional $10 million for the state budget. This will get updated in January with the new calendar year assessments, and will be provided with a more up-to-date estimate in late January, but hopefully in time for the draft funding request. Switching over to state revenues, I'll first start with talking about the Local Composite Index for Albemarle County real quick. This is also a historical look at the LCI. The LCI is a locality's ability to pay. So the portion that a locality picks up for how the state calculates the costs of education for the division. The LCI gets updated biannually, and so we're going into a new biennium in terms of the state budget, which is FY '25 and '26. The data that's used to calculate the LCI going into the next two years is from 2021. So it is a lagging indicator, but it's used for the next two years. And as you can see, what's projected for the next two years is a peak from about 0.64, where we are now, to 0.69 in the next two years. So to put that into impact, the state is saying that we should be providing 69% of the calculated cost that they calculate that may be used for educational programs. So to put it more specifically, there are a lot of different line items in the state budget, but the most of it is determined by this simple formula that you see here. So the three drivers of this are average daily membership, or ADM, and that's enrollment. So that's what Jackson was talking about earlier. There's also per-people amounts for specific programs. So we get a dollar amount per people that we enrolled on March 31st. And then that total amount, the ADM times the PPA is then equalized by the inverse of the LCI. So if our LCI goes up, the state's share of funding goes down. And that's why this piece is important. So that's the only thing we know so far about the state budget. That's going to come out probably late next week, and that'll be the first version, is the Governor's Proposed Budget. But in the meantime, for planning purposes, here's a, a quick forecast. So all I did here is I looked at historical state revenues, the percentage increase year to year shown at the bottom. If we were to maintain the same level of increase that we saw last year going into this year of 6.7%, we would see state revenues of about $76.4 million if everything else stays the same. But the thing we know that's not staying the same is the LCI. And it's approximately might be, again, not exactly sure yet, a $10 million impact if everything else stays the same. So that's what's showing here, is that without an LCI change, we could have gotten $76.4 million, and then a $10 million dropped down to 66.4, which is approximately equal to a negative 1% decrease in state funding from here. Any questions about revenues? So switching over to what we know about expenditure so far. On the left are some expenditure drivers that we've already identified that we're going to need to start budgeting for. That includes inflation and nondiscretionary increases. We see those typically every year, and they don't change too much in terms of the types of things that that funds. The continuation of programs, some big items are keeping our class sizes small and funding our SEL coaches, which are funded by one-time funds this year. We also have some bellwether audit recommendations that we'd like to include for consideration. We're seeing technology and equipment replacement growth needs. And then the last two bullet points are compensation benefits related. So we'll hear from Mr. Downs in a little bit, but we are going to have a market-based compensation increase and benefits improvements to also keep up with the market, and then rising healthcare costs. The reason those two bullets at the bottom are the most important is just to remind you, in the pie chart, you can see our current year budget by expense type. So salaries make up almost 60% of the budget. So any change there is really going to impact the available expenditures that we have for anything else. And then benefits making up almost 24% of the budget, and healthcare is a huge part of our benefit structure. So I'll talk about healthcare just for a moment. This is the same slide you all saw in the joint work session with the Board of Supervisors, where county staff talked about our declining fund balance in the health fund. And the reason for that is that in recent years, our expenditures have exceeded our revenues, and we have not been able to stay within the target threshold, which is that what you see in between the two horizontal lines. And in order to bring our reserve back up to the recommended threshold, as also Jackson talked about, we're recommending a one-time revenue infusion from the school fund and a potential source of that might be our fund balance. In addition, the employee health clinic is something that you know that we're considering to help with long-term, the long-term sustainability of the health fund. And then as we look forward toward the fiscal year '25 budget, we are analyzing and determining what those premium rates are going to be. And that is important when, in our budget development, because the rate set by the health, what the healthcare fund will support, that's paid, the employer payment of that is paid by the ACPS School Fund. So we're going to see a significant increase in the employer healthcare premium going into Plan Year '25, which is half of the fiscal year '25. So that'll be a significant cost driver for us going into the budget. The current year, as you know, when I talked to you all last in November, we had to do a employer premium increase as well that was unbudgeted for. So it's really two years' worth of premium increases that will, you will see as part of the fiscal year '25 budget. So next, I'll turn it over to Mr. Brody Downs to talk about compensation.
All right, good evening. I'm Brody Downs, one of the Directors of Human Resources in our Human Resources Department. And I'm going to start just briefly providing a bit of contextual information I thought I think would be helpful as we discuss HR's preliminary general wage increase recommendation support, the FY '25 budget preparation process. So for many years, as most of you will recall, the school division's compensation practices have been aligned with the Albemarle County local governments. And that approach changed last year, allowing the school division to refocus compensation strategies to better support the unique needs of the school division. Following a thorough review of the ACPS's compensation programs and policies in partnership with Segal Consulting, the school board approved the newly adopted competitive market. This competitive market is comprised of 15 strategically selected school divisions for which the school division uses for its annual and as-needed benchmarking efforts. That number was actually about 28 before we made that change, so we, we reduced it pretty significantly and tightened it up. The school board also approved an updated strategy which targets the 60th percentile for both licensed and classified staff. And that was also a change as they had not been aligned prior to that change. Annually, Human Resources staff survey the adopted competitive market. The survey allows HR to, the opportunity to analyze the competitive market's general wage increase information. This process also allows HR to review the adopted market's practices for compensating specific roles such as teachers and bus drivers. It also allows us to survey the adopted market on other issues, anything that we want to look into more specifically that we may have a feeling may need to be reviewed more closely, leave practices, benefits, employer premiums, and so on. In addition to the adopted competitive market, Human Resources also utilizes the Bureau of Labor Statistics Employment Cost Index, or the ECI, to, the report to assist in the recommendation of a general wage increase for the school division. ECI is updated quarterly, and it provides national and regional information which takes into consideration the cost of living, cost of labor, inflation, and other factors, and provides general wage increase information by industry for consideration and consumption. The ECI report, in tandem with Human Resources Competitive Market Survey, allows us to have a comprehensive framework from which HR provides its recommendations. Moving into aspects of the survey's findings. I think that's big enough, I can, I can answer any questions specifically if you have, if the font's too small. This slide shows the general wage increase amounts provided by localities within the school division's market. Top row shows the amount provided July 1 of 2023. And of the data we were able to, able to get, the bottom row shows which school divisions within the adopted market provided the 2% mid-year adjustments. You may recall, the ACPS approved that same 2% mid-year adjustment, which will go into effect just in a few weeks on January 1st. I do also want to point out that the past few years have been, we've seen a lot more variance than prior to the pandemic. It's pretty uncommon to see a 13% and a 5 and a 10 and 5s and an 8. Usually before the pandemic, you saw maybe a percent, 1.5 would be a pretty peak in terms of variance. So when we look at this, one of the observations is certainly that you are seeing localities that are catching up since, since the pandemic. The bottom row, if it was not applicable, that means that those localities chose not to pass on the 2% increase to staff. Anecdotally, three of those four indicated that they did have some concerns with revenues coming in, and so that, that's what they cited for not passing on 2% mid-year. What you see on this slide is kind of a visual depiction of Albemarle's place amongst, among its adopted market, with Charlottesville City Schools also highlighted as well. You'll see that the ACPS is competitive up until the latter portions of one's career. We, we use, also, we benchmark teacher scales based on the master's degree step scales, as this is where we see most of our current teachers and new hires being placed based on their credentials. This slide is a little bit more detailed perspective of what the last slide showed as well. You'll see that the ACPS is competitive amongst the adopted market until those last few steps. You'll see the school division's placement in percentage, as well as the monetary differences and increments of five years. So the top section is how we benchmark against the adopted market. You'll see that's a, there's a focus on the 60th percentile, not the midpoint, which again is our adopted strategy. And the bottom section is how we benchmark against Charlottesville or contiguous localities. The data you're seeing on this slide also takes into consideration the general wage increase information from a few slides back, which I think is pretty important. So even those localities that gave 13 and 10%, you're still seeing Albemarle's still well-positioned, with the exception of those last few steps. I can go back if you want, ready?
Quick question.
Yes.
Could we get the data, I'm sure you don't have this data at your fingertips, just look on the last slide, could we actually get the data? I was just thinking about this, of like, like at the each of the like, M plus zero, M plus five, 10, like how many teachers, because I'm just curious, like, you know, are, you know, are 20% of our teachers in that, right? Or is it, you know, 10?
Yeah.
I'd just be curious, like, like, so, so like, you know, for what percent of our teachers are we actually above that line? Which percent are we?
Yeah, I don't have that on my fingertips, but we are in the midst of working on our annual reports, so we will have that pretty quickly, yeah.
Brody, I had a question too, if we're taking a couple of, just a clarification. On that slide where you had the people, the counties that gave the 2% increases, the FY, yeah. So the, and the NAs are the counties that decided not to pass on the 2%?
Yeah.
Well, what are the blanks?
Those are the non-responsive.
Oh, they're non-responsive, okay.
Yeah, and you'll notice one, one locality York even implemented a few months early in November. It is unclear as to why they decided to do that, but they, they mentioned that.
Thank you.
So the Employment Cost Index report is reporting that elementary and secondary public schools are providing 4.5 increases over the past year. And again, it's a rolling year, the information is available quarterly. In conjunction with the 2% mid-year set for January, Human Resources is recommending a preliminary increase of 2.5 for, 2.5% for FY '25. Again, that's preliminary. In terms of next steps, there are two critical areas on which HR will continue to focus throughout the budget preparation process. The first is to develop strategies on how to address any areas that the survey indicated that the ACPS is lagging the market. Certainly, the upper, upper end of the teacher scales is, is one such area, but there are a few other areas that we want to dig into a little bit more. And if there are opportunities that we can align strategy to shore up those areas where we lag, we'll certainly work with Ms. Kumazawa in terms of the budget process. The second area that we want to focus on is to, is to continue to monitor what our adopted market will be doing for the, for its FY '25 general wage increase as well, and also to recommend any adjustments as necessary. Historically, we would provide this information in October, along with local government in a joint board meeting, if you remember. And so the ability to have the opportunity to talk with our, our partners within the adopted market into December, they're having the same conversations that we're having right now as well. If we were sitting here in October, we wouldn't be able to have those conversations with the adopted market and say, what are you, what are you looking at for July 1? So the fact that we're actually, the, the time of the year that we're in, it really does present us a pretty great opportunity to have a little bit more of real-time information as to what we anticipate coming on July 1 of '25. Any questions?
A question, not about what you presented, but about one of the comments, excuse me, the SEAC committee presented about, they made the statement that TAs, special ed TAs were getting, it sounded like very low salaries, and I didn't know if we looked at any of that specifically, or if we could look at the competitive market. They said that, I don't know if it's starting salary or whatever, but $24,000 for a 10-lift contract for a special ed TA. So they had a lot of churning. So I didn't know if we have data on that, if we have comparative data, or maybe we should.
That is a component of the survey, so that's an area that we want to focus a bit more on. There's also some information that Segal had provided, which is to some degree nice because it gives us comparison data now, right? Because we have, you know, sort of two years' worth. So that's certainly an area that we're going to explore a little bit more, and if that does arise as one of those areas that we need to, we need to... does arise as one of those areas that we need to, we need to make some changes in terms of pay grade and so on, then we'll certainly work with Ms. Kuzawa on the budget process.
I would be generally interested in what our TAs do get, whatever their specialty is, but I just hadn't heard a number like that before.
Yep. Part of, there's an hourly rate, there's an hourly component, so part of the annualized rate is because most of them, vast majority of them are part-time. We can certainly get more specific information as a follow-up in terms of what the hourly rate is, the typical year, days per year, hours per year, and so on.
That would be great.
One of the reasons we did churn a little bit this fall with, or more this fall with teaching assistants in special ed is because many of them chose to go on the pathway to become provisionally licensed. So sort of Rob Peter paid Paul there, but the priority would be to have the instructional staff. And so I think it's timely in reviewing that data that Brody presented, also hearing from C E A C, because, you know, Dan and I had already been talking about the fact that now we need to fall back again, regroup, and start recruiting the TAs to backfill the ones that moved in. Good news on all that, though, at least in my opinion, is that these, the TA positions are turning out to be a valuable recruiting ground for teaching positions, which was, as you know, I mean, even prior to the onset of the pandemic, was a real concern for us with special education. So necessity is the mother of invention, and I think increasing those pathways to teaching is really important. But we do have to, if we're going to keep having people to go in that pipeline and B T As, we got to double down on our efforts there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So the last piece is to provide you information on what our stakeholders think about our budget. So the first thing I want to talk to you about is the Employee Budget Advisory. This is a new group of employees that we pulled together during this year to get some more genuine feedback on the budget. So what we, this group consists of two representatives from every school and department, and we meet on a regular basis, and they engage directly with our cabinet members and provide feedback on questions and what they want to see in the budget for significant amounts of time, and they're learning about the budget as we go on. So they're not just asked about, well, what do you want to see? We spend a lot of time talking to them about what is already there, and then from there they give us feedback. So I think it's been really successful. We've had, as I said, the cabinet members representing all of the areas of the school division. And so what this slide is showing is showing some example discussion items. They're grouped by common themes. So you can see the discussions focus on facilities and furniture, transportation, security and safety, instructional resources, technology, and compensation. And you can see it's similar themes arising, demands and compensation for TAs, especially in special ed. So that came out separately from the Employee Budget Advisory as well. And so these aren't necessarily in order, or, you know, it's just some examples of what we discussed and what cabinet members heard over our series of meetings, and we'll have one more in January when we have updates on revenues and we have a better idea of what types of things we confront. Another way we got feedback, just this week, a team of us went over to Almaral High School and engaged with some students during lunch there, which was quite fun. They took, we provided a survey that was really similar to the Community Budget Survey, where we asked, what should we do more of, what are we doing well that we can keep, and what should we be doing less of? And these are some of the most common responses that were submitted on their phones. So do more, teacher compensation and resources, school activities and events, food quality and options. What we're doing well and they want to keep is a school environment and policies, technology, and student engagement and activities such as clubs and extracurriculars. Do less, unsurprisingly, some strict school policies, issues with food, and other academic-related concerns such as health. What I like about the budget feedback process is it is an opportunity to provide feedback that may not necessarily tie to the budget, but it's still a good time to receive feedback and make adjustments according to that feedback. Some of it can be addressed in next year's budget, some of it can't, but I think it all fits together. And then, as you all know, the budget, the budget survey for the public closed last week. We had almost nine hundred respondents, which is typical for a survey like this. And here are just some demographic questions. You can see we had a lot of family members participate. There was a kind of a new area where you could, you could identify yourself at what neighborhood you're from. Again, it's not scientific because it wasn't like a specific dropdown. It's how people labeled, put it in their box. And then at the bottom is ethnicity and race, and we do typically see an overrepresentation of white respondents. In the survey, we asked three quantitative questions. How well are we meeting student needs in the area, areas of academic, social, emotional, and physical? As you can see, for all three, the most frequent response on given a scale of one to five, how are we meeting academic needs? Three and four was the most common. Social, emotional, three and four was also common. And then for physical, I just noted that four was much higher than three, which I found was interesting.
What is, I'm sorry, physical need? Is that physical building or physical ed?
Physical needs. I think the physical child, like, physical needs for the child.
Like the one for two.
Like one, yeah, it just seems like a, okay.
Like recess.
For recess.
Yeah, okay.
Space, two recesses.
Yeah.
This is the first time that we've asked these questions, but if you all like this data, we can build on it in future years and set a baseline, comparison point. We also asked qualitative questions that I went over with the student survey. These were some of the most common responses that people wrote in. So what's working well is a commitment to staffing. So S E L coaches, counselors, and the variety of student services that we have. A C P S teachers are amazing, and the reading specialists are making a difference. What do you think we should do more of? The most common responses were salary increases, building additional schools, which all relevant topics for this evening, more training to support differentiation, and improving athletic facilities around the division. And then finally, what do you think we should do less of? The most frequent responses were reevaluate the expectations for staff, evaluate the size of central office staffing, and some division-wide meetings, doing less of those, and then external consultants for projects that we've had recently. So that's the high-level information with regards to community feedback. We do have the details, the detailed results of the survey posted on the budget development website, if you're interested in that. And if you're interested in any of this and you want to know more, I'm happy to give you more details. So what we're looking for tonight is some input to help us as we draft your version of the draft funding request. So I'll open it up to you all for discussion. Here are some guided questions, if you think that might be helpful. Getting this information from you would help us out, so.
And I would say too, Maya, that these are particularly things that would be helpful because as we plan just to have the two-by-two meetings where we can go into like give more opportunity for discussion, if things you want to know more about, if we can know that ahead of time, we could probably prepare for it.
Yes.
Just two quick questions, going back to L C I. The ten million dollars is over two years, correct? Or is it twenty million dollars of two years? Okay. And the last time the L C I went up on us, it was because somebody had sold a lot of, you know, stocks and had some terrific gains that showed, you know, like just a balloon. What happened this time?
Well, so the similar piece is that it was adjusted gross income that drove the L C I increase. Charlottesville and Almaral increased probably in the top five of all of Virginia in just income. And of course, our real estate values have been increasing too, but that's, that was in line with the rest of Virginia. So that's all the information we have at this point. It's income-driven. We don't know who or what, the line.
We had some, we had some big names, some big salaries.
But it went up.
So you don't know who, who determines that? I mean, you know, who says how much it's going to affect us?
New York D C people.
Who determines it, in other words? Of what the rating is for Almaral County?
Oh, so there's a formula that's used, and so the inputs into the formula includes the main drivers are adjusted gross income, real property values, and retail sales. So that gets updated every two years based on the statistics of Almaral County, and that gets plugged into a formula. It's in the budget book in the supplemental section, if you want to see the formula.
But that's the state.
Yeah, and so this is a dumb question, Maya, that the way they determine adjusted gross income is through income tax returns? How do they do that?
I, because they use the term adjusted gross income. That sounds like a.
So my, what I think I remember and imagine is that they're, what they're doing is gather that data through the tax assessments for income. The issue, the issue with the L C I is we don't have, we are not funded through adjusted gross income. So it's like an appendix, right? It's there, it doesn't help do anything, but you still have to have it. It's part of the L C I. So, I mean, the, the property values make sense because locally, we, that's accessible for the schools. The same thing's with sales tax, but that's the one part of the L C I that we don't get a piece of when we get funding, but it's factored into our ability to pay locally.
So this is a topic for your legislative.
Yeah. Now, this is a hot, it's, I'm not going to say it's a hot topic. It's a little hotter than it's been in previous years because of the J Lock study that came out like three months ago, two months ago, that really was pretty damning toward the L C I as a calculator. And the way that Virginia provides funding to schools is now an outlier. It's an approximation of equity that was, at one time, it was looked at as kind of a innovative approach. And when you look at it, it is innovative. It does take into account local ability to pay. However, I think we're one of three states now that doesn't do funding based on student enrollment, largely student enrollment driving a cost per pupil, and then factoring in different things that you need more funding for particular students, like the E L student population, the free reduced lunch student population. There are other states that move to that, and it's more progressive than what we're currently doing. This piece about the adjusted gross income, it's just fascinating. It's always been that way.
Okay, Maya, could you go back about two slides that showed, what do you think we should do more? Is there any point in time that that would be shared with the Board of Supervisors? Because I think some of those things would be helpful for them to know.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. We can do that.
Maya, I'm interested in the public study or the community study where one of the elements was, do you think your kids are doing well, social, emotional health? And particularly since the federal funding for our S E L coaches has dried up, do you have any more granularity on that question about what people liked about that? I mean, as you know, I'm always promoting mental health, but, well, I'm assuming that we're going to try to fund S E L coaches at all twenty-five schools again, and now it's unfunded by the recovery funds. So I guess I was just looking, I mean, I'm persuaded already, but wanting to know what else parents said about, if you got that detail.
Yeah, we can try to pull out some of the comments that were made specifically about those positions and provide like a list of reasons.
Yeah, go spend days on it.
So we get back to the questions you're asking of us now?
Yes.
I know that we have integrated the bellwether into our strategic plan, so it's no longer just bellwether, but it's a part of our strategic plan. All of those recommendations, I would say, would be my number-one priorities. And then we have, with varying success, in my perception, sunsetted programs that may not be doing the things that we wanted them to do, or maybe there were unclear goals, or maybe there was mission creep, or maybe another mission crept onto them. I don't know how we can review those, because our budgets recently have been really great about if we have a new program, here's what it's going to look like, and here's what we want from it. But I don't think that we've had that in the past. So we don't know all those programs that started in the past, how they were supposed to, what their lifecycle was supposed to be. So if, if it's possible for us to do that, or come up with a way to do that, to help us see those financial efficiencies, I would be very interested in it.
The program reviews.
Yeah, but the program reviews that I've seen have not given me the information that I wanted. So I know that's not maybe helpful, but a program review that actually lets us know what it was supposed to do, how that aligns with what we're doing now, and whether it meets any goals that we have now, for how much money we put into it.
So basically, your answer to that number two is?
All the programs.
Many, aside from the number ones, yes.
I was thinking about the reading intervention programs or interventionists, and if there was any data that would be helpful in us knowing, is the number that we kind of included in the budget, and actually, in reading intervention and the additional English language supports, like if what we included in last year's budget, is that enough? I mean, I guess by looking at caseloads and, you know, who's rolling off? Or are there certain schools in the urban ring that we would need to provide additional supports? Again, if, like, again, I go back to like if kind of achievement gap is our number one, like, everyone needs to, we need to focus on that, making sure like those are two big investments we've made. Are those investments working out? And, you know, like, that's, I don't want anyone to think we're cutting, but like, are there places that we need to increase them to make sure we're continuing to make the progress we need to make? And I know, Kate, you had said last year at this time, like, we'd love to include math interventionists in that, and that has come up in some of my school conversations. So that would be another piece, is that something we would want to, I know we're talking about adding, but consider just because this achievement gap continues.
From a student perspective, the biggest programs I care about beyond like functioning of education would be Alice Training for Students and Better Mental Health for State. And I am going to go.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Wonderful, so wonderful.
Yeah. Sure, take your, your old things. Share.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Happy normal days. Any other comments?
I know, like, I'm just thinking about what you were saying, Judy. So I know we can bring you the ones we started doing, like, when we, when we started doing the logic models, because we've been pretty, I'm not going to say it's perfect, but we've been fairly consistent in pulling in the owners and going through it. And we've got a lot that are like yellow. We've got a fair amount that are green, like, they're healthy, they're moving. So we could, we could definitely bring that in, just try. So I know, I'm pretty sure we can bring some data around that to kind of give you an idea, you know, give the board a chance to look at it and say, okay, well, that's, I don't know, it's yellow, it's, what does that mean? I think that would be a healthy part of the budget work sessions, you know? So I'm just grappling with that, because I have the same desire that if something's not helping. not helping us meet a goal.
Well, when did we start doing those logic models? It seems like it's been since I've been here.
Since I started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, there's all these other things.
There's a laundry list in the budget, like, if you, it's, I forget what page it's on, but there's like a whole, there's a whole list, so, but I think if, so maybe, maybe like, as we get in toward the work sessions, you know, you're, if you're all looking at that, and there's things that you just really want to know more about, so what does that yellow mean, or what does green actually mean? I know it's on the logic model, but I think it's worth a more rigorous conversation, so...
What I think I heard was go earlier than that. Some of those have goals, and we haven't, but is there things that happened before that, that, now, this question, do we know the goal? Yes or no? If the answer is no, then...
Well, in my sense too, Chandra's not here, but, you know, I do think there's a fair amount, there is discipline around, for example, being a reader and saying, you know, "We're not going to keep spending money on that," so there are components, there's been a lot of assessing the value of things like UFLI that we added, things like that, and not continuing things that we weren't getting what we needed. So, I really think that's a valuable question, and one of the things that happens is when you do have a tight budget like this, it's not going to be catastrophic, it's just tight. It's a good time to look at things, it forces you to look at it to, if you're going to try to do something different or cover costs that you weren't anticipating. All right.
Nothing else? All right, thank you so much, Maya.
Thank you, Maya.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other school board business?
No, but just to comment, we have listened to the past several years of the CAC reports, and they've talked about increasing professional development for general teachers, or they have talked specifically, and it doesn't even matter what they talked about. I mean, it does, but, I mean, my point is, shouldn't we have some response to reports that are delivered to us? You know, we're going to look into the, you know, employment comparisons of TAs, or we are growing TAs in special ed to get licensed. I mean, I just wonder if we should consider having a formal response to such reports?
You can use mine, I wrote a response, so that kind, it did address each one of the pieces, but y'all can just take...
Haven't done my homework yet, then.
Well, there was a formal response last year, it wasn't a great response.
I think the formal response last year was more like...
Yeah.
Thank you all so much.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was, it was competitive. And I'm doing actually a little looking, just because I'm curious, about how other divisions, like, do it, like, is there a, is there, because we don't put a CAC member, we don't, we don't, sorry, we don't put a board member on the CAC, some other divisions are, as well as what other divisions do about that report, so I was...
You're a tall, like, you know, whoever volunteers to show up.
Yeah, yeah, so I was, I was looking into that, like, is there, because that, they asked that question, so, but I do think we should kind of give them a, like, a response.
But all our special ed teachers certified now, because I know we're making the transition.
Yeah, so there's, there are special ed teachers that are still provisionally certified, but that's a normal part of the course. It's, the difference now, Graham, is the volume of provisionally licensed teachers, and it's not just in special ed. I think this year, we've got 70 or 80 of the 187 teachers that we hired that are provisionally licensed. But part of the reason for that is because of the teacher shortage, and the VDOE really didn't remove what, it didn't remove the requirements to become licensed through provisional license, but they just cleared a lot of red tape out of it. And also, we got grant funding, $200,000 to put toward providing the licensure experiences, the education, things like that, that the provisionally licensed teachers need to have. So, it's, in many ways, it's a positive program. We've talked about for years having more of an apprenticeship-style program, come in as a TA, you're not, you know, and then as you aspire to move up and make more money and be a teacher, then you move through the ranks that way. So, but we're going to, we've got a bunch of them, and we're going to have that. The other thing that Virginia Association of School Superintendents is pushing for is to go back to when we used to do something called a local licensure. When I was still a principal at Albemarle, there was such a thing as a local licensure. So, what would happen is, someone may not be doing so great with their provisional license, or like, their time ran out, their time window to get it finished ran out, and you, I as the superintendent could, a principal might call and say, "Well, this teacher, this guy's great, but something happened to his family or whatever, can you, would you please do a local licensure for him?" The superintendent had the authority to do that, to recommend to VDOE, and they would do it. So, there's a push to go back to that right now. And I don't, I mean, people could criticize things like that and say, "Well, you're low on your bar" and that other stuff, but if someone has a passion to be a teacher and they can do a good job, then I really believe that more chances to be successful are better. So, I think that's promising. We've really got to do everything we can to get teachers and make it sustainable for them.
Well, I think there's, you know, on that, you know, there's, I have no data, but there's a large number of people, particularly women, who leave the teaching profession when they have their families and are not going to, and they just let their license run out, and they're not going to go back and get a license.